All right, it's seven o'clock. Corn being president will call the meeting to order. We've got a lot to go over tonight, so hang on a moment. We're gonna try to keep it moving. Got an agenda in front of us. Is there any changes to the agenda tonight?
No changes.
No changes. So are there any questions over the consent agenda items? No questions? Receive a motion to approve as presented by Dean and a second by Adam?
Roll them off.
Any discussion? Call if they arrive.
Arrive.
Opposed? That went quick.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds in, we're high five. All right, administrative reports are enclosed. Marty, you're up first.
All right, I'll try to keep it quick, but we do have a lot of things going on in the high school. Numbers are pretty steady. We've got those in front of you. Lots of extracurriculars going on right now. The Fairfribe Band took second in their class at Bentonville, Arkansas. Went all the way to Arkansas for a big competition there. They took fifth in class at Ozarko. Last Saturday, they were the top SCA school there, so did a nice job. And they'll be at Branson next Saturday in St. Louis on the 23rd, so the band is very active. Tennis team lost to Rogersville in the semifinals, but finished with a record of 10-3. Mackiley Cox and Maddie Perkins took second in districts. They advanced to sectionals, beat a team from Nevada, and so they'll be in the state doubles tournament this weekend. It's the second year in a row we've got a doubles team get to the state tournament. There's 32 doubles teams in the state, so quite an accomplishment for those girls. Cross country, boys' team is consistently placing near the top, and we have a boys' team, which is kind of nice, then Coach Wagner hasn't had a full team for a while now, and they're doing really well. Senior Bethany Wagner consistently among the top runners, and I know they had the SCA championships tonight. I haven't heard how that panned out, but I know Coach Wagner was excited about that and the chance for our kids to get some SCA medals. That's, I don't know if we've ever had an SCA cross-country meet have a coach.
I think.
It's been a while.
Years.
Yeah, it's been a while back, so, and that was at Willow tonight, so quite a, quite an accomplishment for Coach Wagner and the cross-country team. Softball is 11-11 and 11 this year, which is more wins than the last three years combined. So they've taken a big step forward. They were second place in Bakersfield Tournament, the middle one tournament, and they have their district tournament this week in Aurora. That's where they'll be tomorrow night. Volleyball took third place in the Houston Tournament. It's got to play in the new gym in Houston. Took fourth place in the licking tournament last weekend, and they'll have districts next week. And then non-athletic stuff, our CTE programs, the FACS program, the Ag program, did a fork-to-farm tour one day last week, and it was really just a cool thing to go all the way from, went to the stockyards to a farm and just kind of showing the kids all the way from, from fork-to-farm.
I attended that, and that was.
Yeah. New program, and we had several kids participating in that, and a good, our CTE programs really work well together and do a lot of cross-curriculum stuff that's really good for our kids. Other CTE stuff, they've got the school store up and going, and I'm sure you guys have seen that on social medias and at ballgames. The woodshops producing some products for people to buy and doing some cool things down there as well. And also the FBLA and FCCLA went to a career day at Silver Dollar City in Branson. I think they had a good time at that. And then our math department has started a math lab, a math lab.
No typos, please.
Make sure you get that right. They do that after school for all math students. What we're trying to do is, you know, math is always difficult. It's always a challenge, but this is our attempt from our department to try to make it to where, and then they communicate with parents like, hey, your student needs to stay after for some tutoring. But that tutoring will be, you know, all four of our math teachers kind of rotate through there, and then we've got some student tutors to come in and help as well. So the idea is, and I can relate, I was a math student that wasn't very good, and most of it was my fault, but you hear math differently from different teachers and different strategies, so we're kind of trying the shotgun approach there to try to hit all of our students and help them out with their math scores. So that's what we're doing. Coming up, we've got the end of the first quarter on Friday. Next Thursday, we'll have student-led conferences across the district. We have a PD day November 1st, and then November 4th, which is right before the next board meeting, there will be an NHS induction ceremony, and that's always a really cool night when we honor our, our top scholarly students and also have done a ton of community service, so kids that definitely deserve some recognition will be inducted into the NHS National Honor Society on November 4th, so you're all invited to that.
All right, good. Any questions for Marty? All right, thank you. Tina?
I was expecting you to go to Bobby next, but.
You're next in the packet. I just go with the order that man.
Sometimes you do. Sometimes you start at one end and then work the other way. I never know.
You gotta be ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. Okay, so we two, of course, it's a district-wide event. We have student-led conferences coming up next Thursday. We're there from 1:00 to 6:00. Our advisory classes, I have students practicing and gathering their artifacts, and they literally practice them through a script so that they are ready for their parents to come in and they know what they're going to say, so that's kind of exciting for the kids. I, we had a good turnout last year, and we're really hoping for over 90% this year, so. We have a fall social coming up. Everybody gets really excited about those. We're hoping that the weather will be good that night, and we're going to try to do it on the playground again. We had a good time out there last spring. Little, little more ability to social distance out there, some games, some music. We had the photo booth last year, which Interstate does for us. It's part of our services that we get. We don't have to pay for that, and that was a big hit last year, so we're hoping that that is a good thing, and that will be October 28th, so two weeks from Thursday. We always have students get, get some input on that and help with that. We've been doing some math score analysis and PD work with our teachers. I have to kind of give a shout out to Chris Wagner. He, he had ELA in science here last week, and then Thursday, we have him coming in in the morning to work with math. And he is really, he set up a Canvas course for each subject area in each separate building. He has all their data in there, all of their resources. They go to one place and they click, and there's everything that they need to support their teaching, and it's just really, he's really done a lot of work on that. And we're also, we're really giving a big focus to our math this year. We've looked at our I-ready scores. We've looked at our math scores, and we're not happy with either of them, so. Thursday afternoon, when he gets finished going through data and they identify their areas of need, we have a consultant coming in, and she's going to start working with them. We've done some contracting with her for the rest of the school year, and she's going to start coming in and working with them and really pinpoint each individual teacher's needs, go into the classrooms, do some observations, and conference with them afterward to really focus on areas of need for the students and to support those teachers and putting some more tools in their teaching toolboxes, so. We are working on next year's middle school schedule. We're kind of doing a big change with the schedule. Again, we have grade level common plan times right now, so that if you're a fifth-grade teacher, you have a common plan time with all of, all of your other grade-level teachers, but what we really feel like we need is that we need our subject areas to be able to get together and have more time to work, and I can't keep pulling them out of the classrooms and giving them subs. When I tell them it's important for them to be in the classroom, and then I pull them out, it kind of doesn't really go together, so we're trying to move to a vertical plan time so that all of the subject area teachers will have planned times together, like the high school does. And we're, we're working on it. We're hoping we can make a schedule work like that and give them that time to work throughout the week on their planned time and just, even if they meet once a week, an hour at a conference. And we feel like our grade-level teachers, they're all in the same areas of the hall. They eat lunch together. They have time in the mornings when I kick the kids on the playground, so they have some time to, to do some meeting throughout the school day, so. We're working on that and hoping that that works out for us. I gave you our I-ready reports, did, and I guess did, did the conference? Okay. I always just like to run the, the basic data. I did a, a four-year report. We've had I-ready for four full years now, and we have some good data. And the first report that I have in front of me is just the baseline for the last four years for reading. So that's the first reading test of every year, and as you can see, we're pretty consistent with our baseline reading scores. They don't vary by more than a couple of percent a year. I'm not saying they're good, but we're not, we don't appear to be losing any ground there. Even with the, the year with the COVID loss and, you know, losing a whole quarter of school and then a pretty rough year last year as far as kids coming in and out and quarantines and things like that, we're still pretty, we're holding pretty consistent in reading. I broke it down by year, and there are two for each grade level. So the top of the one that, the page that says fifth-grade reading. So the top score is their last I-ready test last year, so that's fifth grade when they were at the end of their fourth-grade year. And then the second one is their baseline for this year. And we always lose a little bit of ground there. If you look through there, you'll always see that green line go down a little bit from the end of one year to the beginning of the other, but it looks like our fifth graders really lost some ground between last year and this year, so we're really focusing on, on that this year. We have a lot of students who have to do the 30 hours of outside tutoring to satisfy Senate bill that says you have to do that if you're reading one or more grade levels below. I sent those left out this week, so fifth and sixth graders have to do that. So we're working on reading really hard. I know Mrs. White's really excited about our new reading series and has some good resources, so we're hoping that that's a good thing for those scores.
Hey, Dr. Spencer?
Yes.
Just for clarification, those are two different groups of kids.
No, those are the same group of kids.
Same kids that kept the same cohort together.
Yes, you're comparing their last I-ready score last year to their first one this year, and it's the same group of kids.
Very good.
So we always expect to see a little bit of loss over the summer, but fifth grade hit us a little bit harder with the learning loss than we were expecting, so we're working on that. Math is a little bit different story, and I think when Mr. Wagner talks to you about math scores, I think he's going to do that next month, you're going to see kind of the same trend in math data that you see in I-ready data. I've given you the baseline for the last four years, and we're just losing ground in those top categories, and we're losing ground in the bottom categories. And they're not going to the middle. They're going to the, they're sinking to the bottom, so we are really focusing on turning that trend around this year and not just surface focusing, really in-depth, what are, how are we teaching? What are we teaching? And, you know, just what are we doing in those classrooms on a day-to-day basis, so. If you look at the, the math scores, the, I've got it broken down by grade level again. Again, we always expect to see a little bit of loss, but they lose more math over the summer than they do reading. We have had a lot of conversations about that, and what we feel one of the problems is, and we've talked about this every year that I've been in the building, we've talked about this with math, is we don't feel like our curriculum spirals enough, that we're not going back and we're not picking up those skills we taught before, because that's how you embed it in long-term memory. It's not like reading. You're going to read something every day, even if it's Facebook or Snapchat or whatever, but math takes practice for you to be able to recall what you've learned. So that's going to be another focus of our PD. Starting Thursday, we're going to start working on, it's called interleaving, and it's coming back to those skills and just continually going back to what you've taught and working that in with the new skills that you have. So as you can see, our baseline fifth-grade scores are not good this year, but none of them are just really knocking the top off of, off of those at or above grade level in the green, so we're focusing on that. That's our focus this year. I hope to be able to bring you good news when we do this again in December and then better news in the spring, so. You have any questions about those? I could add to yours.
Just so that I'm clear, the baseline for all students, we have nine, 89% of our kids a year below or one grade or more below.
This year?
Uh, baseline for this year, 89% of our kids are one year or more below.
Uh, let's see.
Just man.
Well, 14% are at or above grade level, so we've got 86% of our students, yes. No, yes, 86% of our students are.
Are you looking at Matt's?
I'm not, I'm not.
I think he's looking at all students.
I'm looking at baseline for all students for this year.
Right, for math?
For math.
So it looks like 3% are, are above, 11% are.
I see, okay. You gotta add 3%.
86% are one year or more.
Love it. Much better.
Well, and that's, that's the whole building, and, you know, I looked at each grade level individually to see if there was any one grade level that was, you know, bringing that average down more than any other. Fifth grade is exceptionally low, but.
Yeah, but.
None of them are.
Nobody's proud or.
Are great, but working hard at that, truly we are. All we can do is try, try something different. We can't keep doing the same thing, and hope, hope is not a strategy. We know that, so. A little more on the upbeat side. On November 14th, we are going to have, Mr. Haji is having a middle school choir concert that day that involves all choir students, five through eight, and we're going to do, on a smaller scale, something we plan to do on a grander scale in the spring. We don't have a lot of building projects yet ready to show parents, but we do have some art, and we have some projects that we, that we already will have finished by then, so we're going to open the building up that day and have just a little bit of a middle school showcase after the choir concert, and then in the spring, we plan to do that on a much bigger scale after we have some STEM projects ready, some social studies projects ready, some things ready for every class, so.
Is the choir, is it going to be open to the public?
Yes.
People coming in to watch?
Yes. And I think it'll be all of the fifth and sixth graders and then the seventh and eighth graders who choose choir as their elect, as unelected.
I could add a question. On the, on the lower end of the spectrum on both the reading and the math, is that the, is that the special needs kids as well, or what's the?
Well, some of them are. Some of them are our students. Maybe they have a specific learning disability in reading.
So that's included in that count?
That is included in that.
Okay.
The only students we have who do not I-ready test are the students who are, are most severely disabled, the ones that are in Mrs. Stamper's classroom. There are 10 or fewer of those, so, yeah, that's, a lot of those are our RTI students, and we have a really good RTI program, and I, I know I gave you some data on that last year, but I'll do that again this year as we go through our I-ready testing. But those kids make a lot of progress in Mrs. Wardle's class and in, in Miss Kate's class over the year, and I've seen them come up two and three grade levels in a year in those classes with that really intensive one-on-one that we get.
So, sorry. So let me ask one question. When we first put the I-ready in place, the reason we did it is because you could drill down all the way to the student level?
Yep.
And are we, are we utilizing that data?
We are. For instance, our math breaks down into, I think it's five different categories, and it, it shows which areas they're weak in, and I can look at that, and I can see, okay, so where are we weak as a building, and then the teachers can look at that and say, where am I weak in this grade level, or where is that student weak? And yes, we do use that data.
You're not seeing any trends in there that?
Um, the trends that we're seeing, we, we know that we're weak in, in geometry and measurement for some reason, and that agrees with our math scores, and I ran some scatter plots on this, and that's kind of boring data stuff, but our math scores and our I-ready scores are, are on target. They, they follow a trend line, so this is good data that informs us where these students might be as far as math.
Good. The consultant that you have coming, where do they come from?
She's coming out of Springfield. Her name is Cindy Bryant. She works with, she is on the National Council of Teachers in Mathematics. She was the top math person at DESI for many years. She was instrumental in helping create the math, math test that we have now. She's worked for GoCSD for several years. She's, she's just been around in education, and she's, she knows what, she's been a math teacher, so she's.
How much, how much time does she spend doing this, you know, at our school?
In our school, we have her for 10 days this year, and like I said, it's going to be very individualized. I've already met with her and talked about, you know, what, where each of those teachers are, because I have teachers of varying experience, brand-new ones and ones who've been doing it forever, so. We've already met, and she's going to start that on Thursday, so.
How are the 10 days spent? Are they spent in all, all at once or scattered out?
She will, we'll start schedule, we'll schedule them for the first time on Thursday as far as when she'll come back, and we'll probably do pairs of days where she'll come and she'll spend two days in a row in the district, because I want her to spend two hours each time in each teacher's class at different times of the day, and then I want her to meet with them on their planned time and really talk about, okay, so what do we need to be changing here? And, you know, I, I, I can get in those classrooms, and I know a lot about pedagogy and some about math, but she can really focus on the math and how we need to be teaching it.
Hope it helps. Any other questions? Bobby?
All right. At the elementary, we're plugging, plugging along, and that's about the best word I have for it. We're doing well, trying to make tomorrow better than today, and a couple of items in the numbers that you might, and that I'd like to point out is, we had 12 enrollees, or we're up 12 in a month. I'm not sure why that is, but if we continue to grow like that, it'll really boost our numbers. Attendance is trending downward. We've had a strep throat go through the building. I think this one's.
In my mouth.
So it's in the middle school a little bit, I guess, but so, and I'm at a loss to, especially my building. These kids depend on their parents to get them to school or get them on the bus and, you know, and I'm sure some of it is legitimate sickness, but we have incentives, and so if you have any suggestions other than driving around trying to shake the parents up and get these kids to school and let them teach their kids it's important, you know, to be at school and, because you're missing out. If, if you're not at school, you're missing something, so we'll keep working on that and doing what we can do to increase attendance. At the end of the month, we're recognizing red ribbon week. We have some days to help kids realize how important it is to be drug-free. I know one of them is wear your boots. We're gonna boot drugs, you know, to the curb, so we look forward to that. Aaron Brower does a great job. You know, Fire Safety Week was this week. We weren't able to have the fire department in for a couple of different reasons, but they're gonna be here next Monday, the 18th.
Yeah, all day.
And to present fire safety to the kids, and we appreciate them doing that. It's an exciting time for the kids. Love to see the, the fire truck. Parent-teacher conferences, we're looking forward to those next week as well. And we do have a couple of grade levels going to the pumpkin patch later this month, kindergarten and first grade. There will only be one school there at a time, so we'll have an hour and a half slot where we'll be the only school there, so. I wanted to recognize, we're doing staff member of the month, just to try to increase morale and let people know how much we appreciate them. For September, our word was helpful, and this kind of goes on with our hashtag be more. So, and these are things that you can be more of. Cindy Collins was the staff member for September. October was Punctual, and Jessica Bunch. And this is voted on by their peers, so we send out a Google form, and they vote on that, and so their peers are recognizing these people for these character traits that they're showing, so. STEM club, very excited about the enrollment for STEM club. It is way up, and I have to, I have to shout out to Grant Toward, third grade, last Tuesday went to the Ag building, and he took them on a tour of all the great stuff they're doing up in Ag, Plasma Color, the greenhouse, everything, and he did a terrific job to hopefully get those kids interested in science, technology, engineering, and math. And here's the numbers for first grade, 33 students, second grade, 26, third grade, 48, and fourth grade, 37, so a lot of kiddos taking advantage of our STEM club. And that's Janine Moffis and Bernice Lerson and Kathy Picard. And they have a lot of helpers too that get tips of hours for helping out with those big numbers that we have, so.
What is that? Is that, I'm sorry, I forgot. Is it after school or during?
After school on Tuesdays, so.
That's about a third of your population there, isn't it?
Yeah. In the beginning, the first year or so, we kind of limited it because we weren't sure. The last couple of years, we've opened it up to anyone that wants to stay in.
Any questions for Bobby?
Kindergarten, by the way, will do STEM in, in the spring, so they'll have that opportunity.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
I want to move it on to the HVAC project. Most of the HVAC.
Don't now, don't characterize it that way yet. We had an opportunity to meet with the planning committee for the HVAC project for the middle school. As you recall, this was built into the ESER III budget that was submitted to DESI. We had estimated at that time about a $900,000 project to do that. Since that time, as I said, we met with John. Show us your last name.
Wixson.
Wixson. And introduce your colleague, would you?
This is Chris Tyler. He's, he's our implementation director.
Okay, and they're both from Integrity. After we met last week, I mean, the bids that we had, we had, they had two bids, I believe, and they were almost double what the estimated budget was in ESER. So I thought I would just kind of open it up to John, a bit, a bit, Brian Ryan's out in Kansas, doing other board meetings tonight, I think. But just to kind of maybe share with the collective board what we talked about last week in terms of the progress and the bids and the reason for that and some possible options.
Sure. So as you know, we, you know, we were brought in, man, it's been three months ago probably, and the goal of, of what we are here to do was to go in and assess the HVAC system at the middle school and then come up with options. We, we met with the, the building committee, and we went through multiple different types of upgrades that we could do, like different types of systems for HVAC, and we, we talked about the pros and cons to all of them, and we all collectively agreed on moving in a direction of a system called VRF, which is variable refrigerant flow, it's a technical term, anyway. But it's a, it's a really neat system that would fit very well into the middle school. And when we originally started the project, you know, with, we were looking at just the three-story, the 100-year-old facility, and some of the budgeting came from that, the original budgeting, but then really diving into the system, we found, you know, that it actually reaches all the way into the high school in quieter ways, and we ended up not quite doubling the square footage, but it, it went up by at least 50%.
I think we went from 36,000 foot to somewhere around 55,000 square foot.
Fifty-five, around. So that, that was one thing that happened, and then as we all know, with, you know, the way that the money, you know, is, the rules behind it with, you know, with prevailing wage laws and such, you know, we, we reached out to four different contractors, three of which ended up giving us bids. We, the, there's, the contractors, one's out of West Plains, and then the other three were all out of Springfield. We ended up with two that, that showed interest. We visited the site multiple times. We designed the system, paired up with another, a supplier that, that supplies the product, and we've, we ended up, the, the winning bid was the West Plains contractor, and I don't know what else to tell you, but.
Y'all, what was that bid?
So the, the final all-in number, and I have a sheet here I can hand out to everybody, if you want me to. Well, again, this, you know, includes, this, this is all-in number, turnkey. We're trying, you know, it's the demo of the existing system and then the installation of the new. This also includes two new packaged DOES systems, which you currently have in place now, but we're not running. But that'll give a major upgrade to the air quality in the space, because we're gonna be bringing in a lot more outside air, and then also a new control. And then also a new control system and we'll be able to remote in from, from anywhere. Mike and his team will be able to really control this system a lot better than it currently is. You know, the other major, you know, the, the other thing I could say is that the existing system, as it, as it stands, you know, there's some challenges there with maintenance, with being able to maintain the, the quality of the space. You got hot areas, cold areas, it's a big challenge with that type of system, especially it being two-pipe. You're either cooling the whole building or you're heating the whole building. You know, this system eliminates all those problems. It, you know, it's very efficient. It's a really good system.
The way, the way the system works, we understand, tell me if I'm wrong, for you guys that weren't on the building committee, but you've got some outside units that set out and then they got pipes to carry the coolant or whatever to an individual unit that sits in each classroom. Each classroom will have control of its own unit. Deal that hangs up in the ceiling, very small, very quiet. We went and looked, I didn't go, but we went and looked at a system that they had put in, the same people had put in at DRS and West Plains, very quiet. And like I say, you can run what, like eight different rooms or something off of each system, I believe? It's very easy to, down the road, if we build on or you take something off, it's easy. You don't have all this duct work to contend with. It's very easy to add or take away rooms at any time. So that's kind of why we really looked at that system for the, for the building.
It was similar to a mini split in a house kind of deal. And I think one of the high points from Josh Owens' standpoint, it eliminates all the water lines. So you don't have these water lines running overhead and ceiling tiles and things like that. So you're, you're going back to refrigerant and electrical controls versus water running through this whole building there. So there definitely were some advantages to this system. And I don't believe, I believe it was kind of middle of the road as far as price when we originally looked at price between the three systems that we looked at there. So this isn't the newest, highest-priced system that, that we were given as an option either.
And we're, and we're able to utilize a lot of the stuff that's already there. So the duct work that's there for the two DOES systems, we can reuse. You know, that's, that's a bonus. In all of the area that's outside of the three-story, the additional middle school and even into the high school, there's duct work there that we're going to be able to reuse, so that, so it's, it's an easier, cleaner.
And it's a system they can come in and work evening times, weekends, time throughout of school and not totally disrupt the whole room. They can, you can go in as parts, not all over toward the, the existing system can still be used until this system gets on. We can turn on this section of the building now and still be using the old, you know, if it takes time to get it all installed, it doesn't have to be everything shut down until this whole system, the whole building is done.
Now, there's some planning involved in that, I guess.
Sure, absolutely.
A little bit of coordination.
So the original 900,000, you didn't know that was 55,000 square foot? That, that was one thing, right?
Went off of a satellite image, right? Used a square foot for footage from that.
But then originally, we didn't know about prevailing wage or we didn't think we were going to have to use prevailing wage or what?
Yeah, the, the prevailing wage that we ended up having to use was higher than we anticipated.
Have to use federal prevailing wage instead of state prevailing wage.
Federal, oh yeah.
And do we know what that number is yet?
I mean, it's pretty close to, so you classify your labors per, per the wage scale and, and some of those descriptions are $25 an hour more. So we do not know the official number yet, but I mean, it's close to 20, 30% above.
$25 an hour more than what?
Than the state.
Than the state. Do we know what the state is?
Yeah, we have all the information. It's just the biggest problem is, you know, we've been in contact with DESI, which they sent us to the Board of Labor in the city or the state, which has been zero help. But we're, we've asked for them to like give us the rate scale, you know, that you're actually going to compare us to. My personal opinion is they don't even know what that rate is. So in the current situation, we have to be, you know, err on the side of caution and use the higher, highest rate.
Correct, with it being funded with federal funds, usually that's the, that's the, the wage rate that you have to go off of, is what those, is what that federal, is what that federal rate is.
So you're saying you have to make your estimate off of that or you have to actually pay that?
We actually have to pay that.
Yeah, okay.
Because when the auditors come, we'll have certified payroll, which we'll submit with every pay, pay application and they'll have it all listed out and they go through and make sure that everybody was paid what that day was making the wage was.
Which they won't tell us how much is.
We, we know what it is, but we just don't know the actual man-hours that they had.
So what's your estimated difference in the total cost between using, or do you know that? Between using the state prevailing wage versus the federal in this 1.8 million?
It would be low six figures, about probably around 100, 150,000.
The variance would be 150,000?
So where's the other?
Right, when we go from.
The other 100,000 dollars.
How much of it's the square footage that we missed initially? How much of it's prevailing wage and how much of it's, you know, just stuff going up due to the economy that is right now? How does that break down?
Quite a bit of it was, was the square footage, whenever you almost double it. It's, that's, that would take us to about 1.4 million.
Just in the square footage?
Correct.
Are you talking about, and because I, I'm not. So the two-pipe system goes into the high school. Were you talking about the addition? Is that what we're talking about it going into?
I'm not certain.
Even, yeah.
Where's the other 20-some thousand feet at, is my question?
The 95 addition.
Correct, yeah, there's a mid-90s addition that was added on and then.
Two buildings were connected.
Correct, and then, and then it connected over to the high school.
But it's not actually in the high school, it's that addition. So that addition was, we built that addition, I'm just asking this question. We built that addition and we tied it into the two boiler system and not?
The previous board did. No, it's much smarter than that.
I just want to make sure that's what we did. I don't care who did it. I'm just saying that's what we did, right? So we didn't actually put a HVAC in that addition?
Yes, didn't.
Is that right, Mike?
We, there's also a couple of classrooms over in the high school that were not part of that addition, that were added on to that also.
The fax room.
Oh, so we ran the pipes all the way into the high school. Nice.
The fax room and.
Originally, it went clear to the library.
Really?
Yes, but we took those to library offline several years ago and it wasn't doing the job in there.
What'd we do in there? What'd we do in the library?
We put new furnaces and air conditioners in there. There was two different systems.
Parked it style like we're talking about?
A split system.
Similar, mini split.
Not VRF, no.
Yeah, yeah.
More like a furnace at your house. Yeah, more of a traditional system.
Okay, in, in just that piece? So we were able to pull back a piece of that two-pipe system and replace it? As opposed to the whole elephant at once?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is the whole elephant at once?
Correct.
And that's why we agree so much because we can't, we can't really take 60% of the system off and leave 40. It just wouldn't work. Those boilers are too big, the chillers are too, the way they are controlled, it'd be very difficult to continue to maintain that system if we left, if we did half of it, for example.
They have a fully functioning system for, for them to work well, it's either one or the other.
So it is all or nothing?
All or nothing, yes.
We could, we could maybe space it out over a couple of years if we needed to and we could limp it along, but that's what it would be, is limping, limping the old system along.
We've lived along for quite a while.
Part of that, if we, if we take too much off of that existing system, it's going to really put a lot of strain on the chiller, for instance, to, for it to run that way. Having any resale value if we use it that way is.
So if we reduce the workload, it's harder on the system?
Yeah, they don't turn it down well.
So with boiler, chiller, all that stuff, we're doing away with it?
Yes.
Right. What's the estimated resale value or, I mean, what can we gain a little bit back?
I think.
Can you get half a million dollars out of it?
I'm guessing not.
So, okay, so I knew this was going to come up. So I reached out to York and Train this week to get a similar price on a brand-new chiller. But they told us to budget between 60 and 70,000 for just the equipment on that piece for that. So I believe that we could get 10 to 20,000 for, for beams five, six years old.
If there's an HVAC museum going in, we could get 12.
Is there any more desperate to donate it?
So the, the other thing that kind of threw us off in the beginning is the, the chiller is 75 tons of cooling. The system that we're proposing to put in is actually closer to, close to 150 tons. So, you know, when we actually started analyzing the size of this, of the equipment in the rooms, it was, it's undersized. And, and a part of that is why we're seeing some of the humidity issues that we're seeing, especially in the 95 addition on the lower level. The, the system's just not sized right. And, and so again, the 75 tons would have been sufficiently sized for 36,000 square foot of building.
For the original building.
Yeah.
But we added the building.
Correct.
And all the extra square feet and it's now not sized. We didn't make the, we didn't make the unit bigger.
A little hot and cooler, getting humid.
And that, that's, that's another, so because of that, when we originally talked about this, we thought that the chiller.
75 tons was good.
Which is 75 tons and it has 600 amp service serving it. The, and we're like, oh, that'll be plenty for the new system. Well, kind of find out we need 1,000 tons. So that, so another expense that we didn't anticipate was having to add another 400 or 600 amp service to serve the new system. So that was something else that wasn't in the original, in the original budget. And that's close to a couple hundred, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
The prevailing wage piece is, is almost negligible.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what the point.
That's not a big number.
No, that's the point I was going to try to make because we talked about that last week, but we didn't throw numbers around.
Right.
But it sounds like you're respecting, because we, one idea that we had is that to get, to get around federal prevailing wage law, you just run all the money through your budget, all right? And then, and I would, I would have to amend the ESER III budget. We would just take all those dollars and put them into salary, right? Put them into Fund One.
Right.
And then you would have two and a half years to pump all that money back over to Fund Four and just do it internally. And then we could use the state prevailing wage. But it appears to me after this conversation that the cost is going to be 1.4 million no matter what. Even if we end up using the state prevailing wage, it's still going to be 1.4 or something like that.
If you said it's like. I mean, you're talking about still 1.55, right?
Well, in that, yeah, in that neighborhood. I mean, you said there's like maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars might, might be the federal prevailing wage.
It's kind of high. Yeah, of course.
Right. And I wasn't really, and I wasn't really being too, I wasn't thrilled with the aspect of somebody having to pump money over to Fund Four for the next two and a half years, get money in there to pay for it. So that kind of moved more toward, and we talked a little bit about doing a phase project, a phase, doing this in phases that would allow the district more time to get those dollars into Fund Four and, and complete what you could complete each year. Because we are, we, as I said, we're limited by our maximum allowable transfer. We're limited by, which is usually about 550 to 600,000. We're limited by our transportation, transfers be 150, 160,000. Then all our classroom trust can go over there, which is about 443,000. So roughly a million dollars in any one year we can get into Fund Four, all right? But this, we're talking about a, a million and a half dollar project. So it's going to have to be done over several years to give you the time to be able to move those dollars around, all right?
Because part of that money's already spent, that million that you just moved over. We've got, we've got 300 and something thousand comes out of that.
Correct, for the lease, for the lease. So you still have to build your budget for commitments that you have right now. Now, we have one more lease payment on that, the addition, which is 350,000. It's about, that's about 270,000. Then that goes away, so it gives you buys a little bit of time. So with 24, you have no payment. So, I mean, that gives you a little bit of time, but all these dollars right now have to be expended by October of '24, the ESER three dollars do, all right? Now, that being said, and then I visited with Ryan about this again today, it, it's turning into a real timing issue because now they, they released last week that the federal, that the feds approved the state plan for the ESER III money, all right? All that means is that the federal, the federal government agreed with our plan and they're ready to give the government, the money to DESI. The problem is our legislature is required to appropriate those dollars. We can't spend anything until the legislature appropriates it. There's already conversations being done in our legislature, in our Missouri state legislature for politicians who are concerned that this money is too much for schools and they don't really need it. So we have some legislators who are dragging their feet about appropriating any of those dollars. And so it's becoming a political issue and if that's the case, it may be January, February, March before we're allowed to do anything with these dollars. And the problem with that is that the clock just keeps on ticking. At some point in time, I, I asked Ryan, these, these prices here, they may be locked in for 180 days. But at some point in time, if we go outside that window, we got to bid it again. And I can guarantee you the prices aren't going to go down, all right? So that's another issue that we have to take into account, right? But we can't do the project now anyway because we don't have the money. And they'd be very, very clear about the fact, don't spend any of the ESER III until you know you have it, that, until you know you're going to receive it. And so right now, we're kind of in a holding pattern until I hear something from DESI. I haven't even heard anything back from DESI about our application, whether it's been approved or not approved or errors that they might want us to change. So unless I hear from them or until I hear from them and until the legislature appropriates these dollars, everyone in the state is in a holding pattern right now. We can't spend it. I mean, you can, if you're going to be upside down, they don't give you money to.
So this bid that we're looking at is unlikely to stand?
Depends on how quickly we know that we got money. It may stand, I think it may be good through March, maybe. I mean, Ryan said six months, 180 days. Maybe it'll be staying through March, but I think much longer than that, they're probably going to have to bid it again.
We're concerned that there's a price decrease coming on, on materials in January.
There is one coming.
I'm going to say, there is no, no chance that's not going to happen, sir.
There, there is one of, of 10% or greater.
I will tell you that the majority of this bid is in labor.
Correct.
But.
It's a very labor-intensive job. We have over a mile and a half of copper popping we have to put in. And that's all overhead above ceiling. So, I mean, it is extremely labor, labor-intensive.
Copper's heavy north too.
Bill, was there an issue on the, you're talking about running it through the budget and then using the state prevailing wage? Was there an issue on that? I thought Ryan said something about it during an audit that there may be some, some issues with doing.
No, I don't think on that end. I think if you do it the other way, there definitely going to be an audit to make sure you use the federal prevailing wage rate. I think if you run it through your budget, what's that?
What was the other way?
If you run it through your budget, just make your own project. And at that point, you don't have to use the federal prevailing wage, use the state prevailing wage.
Okay, I was confused on that. I thought that was an audit issue if we did it that way?
No, I don't think so, not on that end. I mean, ours, our auditors aren't going to have a problem if we end up paying for it out of our budget, you know? But if we pay it directly with ESER dollars, then we'd have a choice but use federal prevailing wage. But it sounds like that's 150,000, 200,000 of a 1.7, 1.8 million dollar project. So it is kind of minimum. I'm not, I'm going to say it's not a big number, but considering everything else, I think it's the additional, additional square footage that God is on the cost, but. So I think that price is going to be the same no matter what we do.
Yeah, I did the math on that square footage. And that's a hun, if we go from 36,000 to 55,000, that's 152%. So you take that original, it wasn't around 900,000 and multiply that by 152 and you come up with about 1.35. So, you know, I mean, that's a big chunk of the difference right there.
So kind of simply on that, on the state prevailing wage, which what you would do is you use the ESER money to pay teachers, basically.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't put it that way. You put it in, you could say you put it in centers, basically you put it into Fund One. You just put it in Fund One Operations, right?
And then you'd use that.
And then you make, then you make your maximum transfers into Fund Four that year. And then you're actually going to pay for it out of Fund Four with your own money, all right? Because all the federal money went into Fund One, so theoretically you're not paying for it with federal money. You're putting it in Fund One and you're taking your own money. You know the word I usually use? You know the word I'm trying to use? Nobody wants to use it, so I'm not going to use it.
Not even.
I'm not going to do that.
That's probably a good place to use it.
Right, exactly. But no, we put their money in Fund One and take our money and put it in Fund Four and we do this project with our.
Well, my thought on that is out of 1.7, yeah, 200,000 made it, but still 200,000 dollars.
That's true.
So to me, that is, that is an issue, 200,000 dollars.
Now, the other option that we could do is we could do the phase-in approach, which takes more time. It's much more complicated because, I mean, then you have to figure out how to make everything work at a certain time and you have to space it all out. So then we sit down with you and say, okay, we have this much money available at this much time. How much can you get done for that in a way that makes sense?
Correct.
Right? The other option is to, we could extend or lease purchase. And I would have to contact LJ Hart. The last payment on the current one is 2023 and extend that out three to five years or whatever to pay this project. But if you do that. But if you do that, then you're just gonna pay for it all upfront, just like we are right now. And, and then we'll take out a loan with L J Hart, and then we'll pay L J Hart back with all the S R money when we get it. That's kinda how that would work.
If we do that, then we don't have to pay prevailing, except for state, right?
If we, that is, I think that's correct, actually, because we're not, we're taking out a loan to get it done.
Borrowing the money.
Right.
That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay the interest.
Right.
If we did it in phases, would that increase the cost?
Yeah.
I mean, we'd have to localize two or three times, and then, secondly, you know, we don't have any guarantees.
We would probably, correct, I mean, we would probably have to buy all the equipment, and then we'd have to store the equipment until... Because the thing with the system is, everything has to match. So you're outside units need to match with your, with your inside units. So we ended up buying all the equipment once, storing it for twenty-four or thirty-six months, and then-
You guys are sending all that money.
Correct. And, and then we would have to work with the manufacturer on the war, on the warranties, and go with extended warranties, just to make sure that worked out. And, and all in system, all in, that that's when the national warranties would, would be in. So, so there, there would be some out-of-pocket expense to, to the phase of it.
Yeah.
I think the phase-in approach is the wrong way to go. If we're gonna do it, I think you need to-
You gotta pull the trigger, figure it out, or-
Now, then you just gotta figure out how you're gonna pay for it, you know?
How long would it take to complete?
You had everything.
So originally, we, you know, we were thinking, we didn't, we didn't know that this delay was, with the money was a possibility. We were thinking about even using winter break and fall break to get, to do some pre-work. The other thing that's interesting about the, the partner that we ended up with a little better is who we wanted. They, uh, have a fab shop, so they're gonna pre-fab all the outdoor equipment, um, during, while we're still in school. So the second we get out of school, they can, they're ready to come set equipment, and, and all that stuff will be pre-done to save time. That being said, without, without the pre-work that we were gonna do in December, it's gonna be really tough to get it done in the summer.
You're probably looking at sixteen, eighteen weeks. So there will have to be some time, you know, and we, we can start a spring break. There is a lot of outside work to do, but there will have to be some time where we will have to work with, with, with the principal on getting in a couple of rooms. Let's go ahead and knock some stuff out. So there will have to be some coordination efforts. But we're probably looking at between sixteen, eighteen weeks for a full turnkey project. How soon could we move on the lease purchase?
I'd have to contact L J Hart. I mean, but if, if, if the board wants to move forward and get this done as soon as possible, I think the only two options are just pay for it all out of S R, you know, bite the bullet, whatever that price is. Or I can contact L J R and look at some financing arrangements and some type of a payment plan. Because if we have till October twenty-four, see, that's the other thing, is we have, I believe we have to have all that S R, we have to have all the S R money spent by October twenty-four. Which means the lease cannot, can't go any longer than that. So we have to have that lease paid off by October of twenty-four.
Really?
Yeah, because the S R money has to be spent by then.
Can we use S R to pay a lease off?
Well, I don't know, we'll find out. It's a good question. I mean, right now, I think that's the only way we can do this.
But wait, we're putting the S R money over in Fund One, isn't it already?
No, 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 you're right. Yeah, you're, you're right. We could still put everything in a salary.
Yeah.
I just put everything in Fund One. And what we'll do is, we'll, we'll just leave it there. And then every year, we'll transfer the maximum amount of million over to Fund Four and make our lease payment. And the next year, we'll do another million. And the next year, we'll do half a million, and we'll have our two and a half million.
That's a problem I don't like about putting it all in Fund One and then having, it's 'cause you've got, you know, we're gonna have to do that for about three years. You gotta, you know, you can have a big change in the board, you can have a change-
It'll jack up your unrestricted reserve balance.
Yes, very, very big. You know, that's just something, you know, that's just the backwards way of doing it in my book, is, you know, oh, we're putting it in teachers' funds, and then we're taking it right back out to put it in, maybe in air conditioners. I understand, which I agree with you, that a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money, you know, just to, to pay it and get on with it. But I also like the, the cleanliness of, of just moving, doing it straight through to, to pay, pay it off.
I agree with that, but then if there's anything else that you want, I mean, how much, let's go back to how much S R money, or how much do we think we have for projects?
There's a total, our total S R amount's three point two. Seven hundred thousand is, has to be allocated for the running loss, which leaves two and a half million left.
So two point five, and we're saying this is gonna be one point eight.
It's gonna be two before we pull the trigger on it. Yeah, it's gonna be- No way it's gonna-
So we have a half left.
So we will have, let's see, four, five, or five hundred thousand left?
Two hundred thousand might be a big deal. I don't know.
Do I?
Yeah, two hundred thousand might be a big deal. It depends on what we're gonna do, or, you know, what are we gonna do with the other half? Are we gonna build a weight room? I mean, so two hundred thousand dollars might, might, might be very important. That's what we're gonna try to do.
I agree.
And are we still waiting on the state to allocate this money?
Yes. So what happens if we, if we do the lease purchase, and then the state, and the state says, you know, we're just not gonna distribute?
Then we gotta pay it back our own.
And, you know, and, and so, I mean, are we able to do that? Are we committed to be able to do that?
If, if L J Hart, you know, if we can get the lease, you know, along up toward, we, we put it off until our, our payment on the addition is done, we can just roll right over and that. The problem with that is it takes some of the money away, 'cause that was supposed to be money for-
For road repair and buses, and we've got that in the plan already. And you're talking about ten years, adding ten years to that thing?
Well, it's a million and a half, one point eight million at, you know, right now, we're paying two hundred and eighty thousand a year on our payment right now, two hundred and eighty, three hundred thousand.
Five, ten years?
Five, 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 ten years, yeah.
Ten years. So, and, and, you know, I don't know about you guys, but I don't believe in a one point eight. I don't believe it for a minute. I don't think we shovel it that fast.
Is all the material, like if we did move, is, is everything readily available, available to get?
No.
I mean, there's no clear lead times on stuff.
So we're, we're probably looking at about a sixteen to twenty weekly time for all the material now. Some, some equipment may show up, may show up quicker than others.
But you don't foresee like a problem like getting your hands on something?
A mile and a half of copper.
It's, it will take some time.
Yeah. It'll just take some time. Spring weather, talk, spring break, then.
Copper's hard, fine.
So then we'll be moving in fall. That's your good time.
So, we're not sure we can get the money. We're not sure we can get that quick. We're not sure we can get it done.
I'm saying, I'm saying, they're saying, don't spend the money until it's allocated. Right now, it hasn't been appropriated.
I, I think one of the main things when you know-
I think the money, the money will come. I'm not saying it won't come. They're just saying, don't commit to anything right now.
I think one of the main things we're looking for tonight, correct me if I'm, is the board still committed to this project? Is that what you're looking for tonight?
At, at the price that you now know what it is.
Yeah.
I think we have to be committed to it. I mean, we're gonna have to do it one way or another, as they have to think. Whether the-
Are we gonna have this opportunity again?
Yeah.
We haven't had it up until now, and it's needed to be changed for years. Are we gonna have that opportunity again, regardless of what we were gonna spend the rest of the money on? The most important thing is the kids being comfortable so they can learn. To me, the other things like sports, that's secondary. I'm sorry to step on toes there, Coach, but-
I've never been stepped on before.
He's not bad.
While we've got the opportunity, it needs to happen, 'cause it won't, most likely, we won't be able to do it again.
You don't think anybody's gonna give us two million dollars anytime soon?
I mean, spent that off for years and years and years and years.
I agree. I, I think we gotta, you know, we've gotta stick to it, and that's, that's what needs to be done. We're not gonna have the opportunity to do it again. It's been needing done as long as I've been on the board. How we pay for it is still debatable.
I'm gonna tell you, however you, when you start switching it back and forth, that, to me, that's red flags if we're-
Yep.
So, I mean, I don't disagree with you guys, but at, at what, you know, we're, we're kinda moving this down the road. Yeah, we're committed to it. The, the price has nearly doubled or whatever, so when we revisit this again-
At what point do we pull the plug?
Yeah, at what point in time do we say, I mean, is it at two point five million when we don't have enough money to cover the project anymore?
Well, well, and how many, how many, how many millions do you wanna put into that building?
Exactly, you know, I think we're committed to the building. There's, I don't think there's any, um-
You know, I'm worried about-
There's not a lot of options.
There are. I mean, but there are options. And if you can float a bond issue.
Yeah, when it starts, you know, it's a little billy, you add more stuff, but taking stuff out, that scared me too, taking stuff, you know, the age of the bill, integrity, of moving some of this stuff.
Right.
From it, that kinda sprang in there.
You think it's holding the building up?
You know, is there any concern with any of that? I mean, that's a question too.
I think a lot of it can stay, can't it?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the H V A C system's not holding that building up.
No, I know it's not. I know it's not, but-
I mean, I, so, to me, my biggest concern is removing the old system and making, you know, and how, how you patch the floor, how you, you know, do the cosmetics. It's cosmetic stuff that would be my only concern, but, I mean, that's-
So really, the one point eight doesn't include the full demo, right?
Correct.
So, so really, you're at one point nine to do it correctly?
The, this, this, the full demo price is really about stuff that's behind the scenes, like above the ceilings that you don't see.
That stuff can stay, correct?
Correct.
What can is, but it will come back and bite you one day.
Yeah, you know.
You, you will pay to get that out of there one day.
Does what lines drain right, and you have work supplies?
Eventually, along the way, the maintenance department can take pieces at a time out. We can do that when it doesn't affect school.
So that was another question. What can we do with their own people to save?
All of the stuff that's hidden behind walls, up in the ceiling, all of that, we can take out as we have time to do it where it doesn't affect school. Summertime, break time, we can, we can work on all of that.
I've talked to Josh and Carl about, you know, there's the units that sit in each room. That's actually where the heat and the air come from. There's a lot of cosmetic that will have to be done. They, they've taken trim out to get those in there. There are pipes coming up through the floor that make those work, and the walls behind them are sometimes not in good shape. And they can do that, like, if they can take out even three or four a year in the summertime, because they'll have to go in and do some pretty major stuff in some rooms, and other rooms, not so much. But, um, it's, it's gonna be a little time, and they're both picky, and I like that about them, because that whole building could look really terrible really fast if we're not picky with, you know, putting trim back and things like that. So we've talked about that. If they can get it down to where that's all we have to deal with is the units themselves, we can just do those period time. All they're taking up is space at that point, so.
I'm kind of with Dean. I don't think this is staying.
I don't either. I mean, if it, if it increased that much from the first time we visited this, how much more is it gonna increase by the time we actually do it?
Yeah, what, what I, it sounds like to me, what I'm hearing from the board is that you don't wanna do any phases. And you just soon go ahead and get it taken care of now, let's just get it done. So the only option that, that appears to me would be to either just pay for it all with S R, or try to look at some, some financing options with L J Hart. And, and I could certainly approach L J Hart before the next meeting, come up with some funding options, and see what that looks like. Kinda molding a deal with what we have right now, and, and how, and how much longer we have to have to pay it off. Now, we, basically, we just have to make sure all the money would be put into Fund One, and then we just have to make, make the point of every year, we're gonna have to do the maximum transfer to Fund Four, then you just make your lease payments out of Fund Four. And we'd take care of it that way. And then it would still be considered, I think, a local project. But I could get some funding options from L J Hart if you're interested in doing that. But that's not gonna change the price. The price is still gonna be one point eight, you know, it's not gonna change it. It might be a little bit cheaper if we don't have to use federal prevailing, prevailing wage if it's considered a local project.
Correct. And, and I think the, the, the budget shock, like, it doubled, I, I don't think that's in the cards. This was the most painful jump of, of the project, going from nine hundred thousand to this. So I think we're talking about material increases. I think the labor is, is, is already at the top because of what the federal wage rates are. So I don't think you're gonna see any major budget jumps.
So if we end up making it a local project, and we save a, a couple hundred thousand on the prevailing wage, and we get an increase of that amount, it's still gonna end up being a one point eight million dollar project.
How much of it was, how much of this was material? You said there was gonna be, you expected a ten percent increase in material. How much of this one point eight is material?
It's probably pretty close to four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct. Now, that's just equipment. Now, that, that doesn't include the piping or anything like that. That's probably an additional, oh man, I don't even wanna quote, copper right now. We'd have to go back and see, but the actual equipment itself, that we're looking at a ten percent increase, is probably around that four hundred thousand.
Let me, well, let me, let me underline something here. So the way we got here was, we had a seventy-five thousand ton unit operating in a fifty-five hundred square foot building. And it seemed to work okay for its, in its day. And then we added twenty-six thousand to it, making it not powerful enough. But we can't just go back and fix that twenty-six thousand and then come back later and fix the seventy-five thousand? So we can't unwind it the same way it got wound up?
I mean, we can get creative. So it was thirty-six, we added the twenty-two. It, that's not enough tonnage for fifty-five thousand square foot. It's just not. The, the other reason why this is a hundred and fifty tons is, is really the nature of the system. We wanted to make sure that in the winter, we were covered. We had enough heat everywhere. Like, you know, an option would be to go in and V the system down a little bit and takes-
Yeah, I mean, we would be sacrificing some of the performance.
Yeah, I, 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 I understand. What I, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, i- if at some point we were able to add on half again to that system, why can't we undo it the same way? Why can't we eat this elephant two bites?
You could.
Where we, where we fix the, the glued-on addition, right, first, or second. Uh, I guess you'd have to do it first, 'cause it was added on last. And then fix the, the old building. I mean, is it possible to do it? I know you said we can't do it piecemeal, so to speak, but can't we undo it the same way we got here?
One of the problems with that, though, is you have to leave that old chiller hooked up for our air conditioning to work. So you can't unhook it, and so you're committed to that much electricity to run that chiller that you can't pull for the new part of the system too, you know?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, my air conditioning, like, right now, we still have air on, because we have to have air circulating in that building.
Sure.
Regardless of temperature, because we have rooms with no windows and no circulation. So, um, the, yeah, that chiller has to be left hooked up for the air to work until you get the whole system online.
It was that six hundred amps that supplies that chiller we were planning to use for the new system, and add another four hundred. And we, I thought about this the other day. If we went this route, we could upsize that four hundred to six hundred, which wouldn't be that much difference. Just a little bit bigger wire. And we could then put, so, so the way that, the way that we have this designed is there's actually six zones, I would, I'd call it. We've got the three-story building split in half, and each side of, the two different sides of that building are their own zone. We have a zone for the balcony and lobby area behind the, the auditorium, and then we have a zone for the auditorium. Then we have, oh, there's seven zones, actually. Then there's three more zones that serve the, like, the ninety-five edition and into the high school. So, what we could do possibly is go back and, and talk to the contractor and see what we could do about just doing the three-story. You could leave that other system on as long as it's under six hundred amps, we could probably make that work. Because, because of the electrical that we need. And then we, we leave the chiller alone, let it run. Again, it's not gonna, so the systems that are in the rooms are undersized as well. You know, so, for example, there's a, there's kind of a little area on the lower level that's got a little ramp that goes up to a couple of rooms. Those rooms have like one point two tons of cooling in them. They should have three and a half tons in there to really make them comfortable. But the system that's above the ceiling, that's connected to the chiller, has only got about one point two tons in it. It's, it's undersized. We're talking like seven hundred square foot per ton in that room. Typically, we see three fifty to five hundred square foot per ton. So that's where we're coming up, hey, we need two and a half to three tons in that room. And that's what we, you know, did. So, anyway, that's, that's part of why the system increased in size so, so much. And by taking that big building off, it's not going, it's still not gonna improve those, those areas. You'd have to live with the way that it is now for however long you did. And the chiller's not gonna run efficiently, because it's gonna be unloaded, you know, running at fifty percent. An air-cooled chiller doesn't like to run at fifty percent. It likes to run at low. So from a dollars spent to run that system- So, from a dollars spent to run that system, it's that one drop, and you will, so your, your annual incre, your annual electric spend would increase. If we did the whole project, it would decrease. Where, the one other thing I wanna mention, is that we are making a change in heating from gas to electric, so we're gonna have to think about that when you guys budget your utility spend, you're just gonna shift money from the gas budget, I guess, to the electric budget. And we really, really need to, we actually met with the city council a week, two weeks ago, and we, we need to alert them to that, if we, if we move forward, because, because how they purchase power, and you're their biggest cons, biggest user by far, so, just another thing to think about.
So, are we still on board with the project at this point? I mean, I understand if we could, we're, we're, our hands are tied right now, because we don't have any money, we're, we're, we're kind of held up by the state, and I understand price could jump considerably between now and then, and we may have to pull the plug at that time, but at this point in time, are we, are we, as a board, committed to 1.9 million dollar project for the heating and air conditioning in the middle school? I'll start, I am.
I am.
I am. Yeah, I am. I don't believe it's gonna be 1.9.
I don't know, but I think we need to see, let Bill look into some funding situations, I don't, I don't know what, I'm sure it all needs done, and it probably will get done, I just don't know that I'm on board with an additional million dollars on what we originally started with, that's the thing that's hard to swallow.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it all depends what he finds out, you know, through the rest of us, you know, with all that, but for him, it's just kind of okay for him to keep checking into it.
I can look in the, the financing options, but understand the price of the project won't change, you just get more time to pay it back.
We're just giving you permission now to keep going forward, looking at it all.
I'm a little bit confused on the, when we're talking about prevailing wage and the state wage, is, is that, what we're talking about, is that still saving the money by going the state route?
If we, if we finance it?
Right.
I believe so, I need to check on that, but essentially, I'm gonna take the Essor money, just put it all in Fund One, and then you just go make all the transfers you can into Fund Four, to pay for it out of Fund Four, so it's gonna be local dollars, so I believe that will allow us to, to use the state prevailing wage.
But that's, that's using lease purchase?
Yes.
Don't you say?
Yeah, yeah.
So those are a way to use lease purchase and still save the 200,000?
Hmm, the only other way would be to do a phase-in type prod, process, to like three or four different phases.
Step more.
Or just cut it up into three or four different phases, we'll still do it locally, but we just can't afford to pay for it all at once.
Right. And how much, then are we losing when we're done that?
Sounds like the, the only difference is what, a couple hundred thousand dollars is a, between the federal and state prevailing wage.
I mean, if we do lease purchase, that's gonna cost us more money in interest, right? Because we don't know, we don't know what that is.
I'd have to call LJ Hart and get some financing scenarios for you guys. Plus, the other thing is that we need to find out, you know, because if we're gonna do it, I'd like to do it in conjunction with our current payment, and make that one, and then make our first payment on this project due the year after that one, so that we just kind of roll right into that one, and see if there's some way that we can, that'll allow us to do that, um, and then pay it out, out over however many years. But essentially, then we just need to make sure that the money that we get from Essor, that we put into Fund One, gets into Fund Four, just so that we, for nothing else, we've gotta pay this, we've gotta pay this project off.
The, the downside of that, with the, with the lease purchase going and dragging it out over six or eight, or that, instead of, we're gonna have a big lump of money going into Fund One, that's gonna have to sit there, it's gonna, should make our unreserved balances look crazy high, I mean, we're gonna hit 30, 35% overnight if we do that, but we're gonna have to know for the next several years that that money, we can't be touching that money.
It ain't real.
And that's not, that's not a good, that's just not the best plan, when you have, if it was a private entity, if it was my business, I know that, I'm the one that touches that money, but moving forward for the next six or eight years, this board could completely change, the superintendent's gonna change, you know, there are just so many variables that would have to go into effect, that you could really put your district in a financial problem quick, I believe, by doing that.
It's a dangerous, uncomfortable thing.
Well, I, I feel like Scott does, I, I think it needs to be done, but I feel, it's just a, you know, thinking, something's gonna be 900,000, and all of a sudden, hey, it's double, it's double what you were doing, I mean, that's, that's the hard part to swallow, so, but, but I agree, without having my toe stepped on it, that probably needs to be done.
Who worries about stepping on yourself?
Um, I agree with, uh, then, my, my concern, you know, like Coach Ed, I think when we first started talking, we thought maybe 700,000, and then we got to 900 pretty quick, and now here we are at 1.8, I don't think it stops there, so I'm in at 1.8, I don't think it ends right there, I think we're up to two or more, you know, if he's stopping paying increases, we don't, we have a lot of uncertainties there, but at 1.8, I'm in, I think, I don't think that's where it stops, so.
So this is just give him permission before we're checking on things, so.
Brad, but where do we stop that?
Well, when he gets it, then, well, we can stop it at the next meeting.
I can look into some funding options, so if you look at it this way, there's essentially two and a half million dollars that we're talking about, the learning loss law will be straight Essor money, but, so look at two and a half million dollars, this is a one, this is a two million dollar, let's just call it a two million dollar project, that'll be fine.
We've already changed.
Well, I'm not gonna say, I, I, I would rather miss high than miss low, um, and so, basically, you can get a million dollars into Fund Four a year, so at the end of this year, we get a million dollars into Fund Four, I request a million dollars of Essor money to put into Fund One, so there are a million of them, so you get a million in, a million into One, and, and a million out to Four, all right, that's year one, so the next year, you do the same thing, so you got your two million there, so you could probably get it done in two years, but it's, so it's not gonna sit.
You can't get it done in two years, because of that million dollars that you're putting in each year.
You've still got 300,000 going.
You've got 360,000, that's gotta go away with the lease purchase.
Right, no, I'm just talking, but I'm just talking about the Essor money that you're putting into Fund One, you're making sure that that exact amount gets placed in Fund Four, all right, because you're kind of targeting that, all right, and you can't have any, well, I hate to say it, but any new, new large expenditure items. I'm not sure you really wanna do a roof and then, and when you're trying to all this move of this money around, I'm not sure you wanna spend another half million dollars, I don't think you might need to go out and buy three more buses for about 300,000 dollars while you're trying to get all this money moved into Fund Four, you might wanna just leave it alone, and make sure that you've got the dollars there to make your payment, just so you pay off this project, right? But I think you can get the dollars from Fund One into Fund Four quicker than 2024, so I think you can make it happen, you know, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, I just, cash flow would be the issue for me, that'd be the concern that I have, I'm like you, I wouldn't wanna be spending a whole lot more out of Fund Four while you're moving all this money around, you know, because you may inadvertently be taking dollars that you had, and meant to be spent here for just general operating procedures, and then kind of get upside down two or three years down the road, it's like, what happened to all the money? Well, you know, we did this roof, bought a couple buses, we did that, you know, so you inadvertently spent it on stuff that you hadn't intended on spending it on.
Where a lease purchase would lock it in.
Where it locks it in, yeah.
You guarantee you're paying that money back.
Yeah, you know, no matter what, you gotta make it.
But we gotta pay interest, so.
Correct, yeah, and interest right now, I mean, I, I'd have to check with, somebody's saying that, I heard some, one or two people saying that they're able to get a good local in, interest up from the local bank, like 1.2% or something like that, like really cheap, but I can look at the financing options if you'd like for me to do that.
I think we need to, I think we need to plan to move forward with the project at this point, and, and, but we still need to be studying on how we're gonna fund it.
Sure, and maybe between now and November, we'll have a better indication from Dessie and from the state, as far as when these dollars are gonna be available.
I think, I think we need to be ready to pull the plug, or, or, or say, when Dessie lets go of the money, and they say, here's your money, I think, we need to be, be ready to, to make a move and go.
Yeah.
Because, because remember, there's gonna be, every school district in America is getting this money, and they're all gonna be looking at big-ticket items, which is gonna make these contractors be very busy, and they're gonna say, well, we're really busy, let's shoot for the moon on it, and the price is gonna go up the longer we wait.
And we're gonna make some good money.
Yeah.
But I can, I can come back with some financing options for the next board meeting, and maybe then update you on where we are with the dollars available, and maybe we'll have a more clearer picture on how best to fund it. I guess the main, the main question we had is that, as a board, do we still wanna move forward with this project?
But, but our anticipation would be, if we're, if, if, if we finance that, then it should drop 150,000 dollars, because we can use state instead of federal.
I want to check first, let me verify that first, but in theory, yes, because we're actually paid for it with local dollars.
We might pick up another 50 or 100,000 of material.
But then it'll balance out.
So it'll balance out.
It's still gonna be a 1.8 million dollar project.
It's gonna be two.
Be fair enough.
All right, let's move on, let's talk about the MODOC buildings now.
Your concern is too, Brad, we're talking about MODOC, and I understand you got a four and a half hour drive ahead of you, so.
Guys, thanks for your time, really appreciate it.
I did a little bit of the study on that building, it's a good building.
All right, okay, so off the top, before the ad just jumps into it, your thoughts, your thoughts on that building from an HVAC standpoint?
Uh, there's nothing of real value there.
He liked it, but there's nothing of real value there.
He's got another job.
Yeah, but the systems work, it, they're just furnaces, and they're above the ceiling in the upper level, the lower level is really, I would venture to say in need of an upgrade, but they're 15-year-old systems, that's how long they, those are intended to last, so I would, that's why I said there's not real value in the HVAC system there, but it is there and it works.
You're talking about four, 500,000 to upgrade it probably?
Yeah.
Put a million dollar price tag on it.
At first, I didn't, I just wanted it to be clear, I wasn't, but, and that, but the structure of that building is impressive, like, I mean, they, they use that building for some cool stuff, that floor could, I mean, it was holding many semis while they were working on it, people below, and it's, it's a cool building, so, the other one, I wouldn't touch that one.
It was taxpayers' money, they built the best.
Yeah, and it's got a really cool roof on it, that roof, I was up in there.
Yeah, I got it.
Yeah, these guys were too, I'm not sure they got up to the same part that you did.
No, I actually got up into, did you get up into the, into the rafters?
I did.
Yeah, that's cool.
Now, they talk about the south building?
Yes.
You're talking about, this is a better building, right?
Oh, 100%.
Okay.
I thought when they talked, though, it would be more than three foot, they'll, they said a lot around this part, though, you'd have to crawl over.
You would, and you would have to create some sort of way to get to the middle, but, yeah, you, I don't, I'm not saying.
It's not usable, really.
No, but I'm just saying, like, cosmetically, they did an excellent job to, to add that, and the roof's in really good shape, but there's more lumber in there than, man.
That'll tear it down, Zellie.
Yeah, you can make a fortune.
Heating and cooling wise, we don't want anything to do with the north building, if I can tell you.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
From experience, we don't want anything to do with it.
Yeah, and it's got, it's got, it's got, they should use it.
Appreciate you guys.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
You go through, if you wanna stick around and talk about MODOC, it's up to you.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, with us here this evening is Diane Christopher, and just to give a little background information, about six, seven months ago, uh, the board provided direction and permission to enter into a partnership with the Little Springs Community Foundation, to write for a grant through USDA, uh, we came up with $4,000, Community Foundation matched with $4,000, and wrote the grant, they, they had at the time, it was with the Community Foundation, she wrote the grant, so the actual grant was 32,000 plus the initial 8,000 that both the, the school district and the, the Community Foundation brought into, the purpose of that was to hire someone who could come in and, and take an extensive look at the two MODOC buildings, I think going into it, we, we'd had these very general conversations, even since I've been here the last few years, about, do we want them, is it an asset, is it a liability, are we gonna have to take them and then put another million dollars into them, make them functional, and nobody really wanted to pull the trigger on it without really knowing what's there. And so, you know, we, we, when LeAnn left the Community Foundation, you know, we, we could find, we tried to put it out, and she was with the Community Foundation, see if anybody would, we had some doing feasibility study, couldn't find anyone, she resigned from the Community Foundation, so we approached her, and she was interested, and so since like April, I think, we've been working on this feasibility study, and, and so I asked her to come this evening, each of you received a copy of her report, uh, she has a PowerPoint as well, and then just on the back end, just a general conversation on, on where we go from here, so, yeah.
Okay, Bill, did you get this in the?
Yes, it's a, this, what you referred to, I, I was gonna bring that to your attention toward the end of the conversation, but it's like the, the second to last page in the document.
I just wanted to make sure that got.
Is a really important piece for you all to be considering, but we can get to that at some point, I'd rather have maybe the ad go through her report first, and then.
One of the things that is not in there, and I tried to get it on a PowerPoint, but it wouldn't work, but Dessie said every school board member should look at CTE 101 YouTube, that's their information about CTE, a neat presentation, it's two and a half minutes.
You say CTE?
CTE 101, it's on YouTube, and, uh, it's a, it's two and a half minutes, and it, it tells you why, uh, they say why the school board should be excited about, so, so anyway, we'll go on with this, um, this project was really designed for USDA, so some of it's, you probably already know, or may not know, but it's to get USDA excited about funding this project, now, whether you want USDA to fund the project, I don't know, but, but the money was funded so they could look at it, so that would be another grant to get them to fund it, but they wanted to see this study first, so that's kind of where we're at. And then there's the table of contents, that's all in your book, there are the things that we work on, so. Where it started was from the Perkins funds, that was reallocated, uh, to do work, ready-to-work programs in the schools, and there's a lot of money right there floating around, uh, in Perkins, especially for the middle school, they have a lot of money that they're wanting to get rid of for the middle schools, I know you'd like that, and I'm so excited to see the, the principals excited about STEM, so. The feasibility study, it showed that the buildings were in better condition than we thought, uh, the classes could start right away if we wanted them to, with just a little update, uh, the programs could be financed in part by Dessie and other educational grants, and the city of Little Springs is willing to work with the school. Present, the present situation, Dessie is asking all schools to update their schools to include CTF or CTE programs, uh, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to get this building, this building will probably never come around again, so, um, I don't think we could build one as cheap as we could get this one, so, um, presently, the school has nowhere to expand, or does not have the money to do so, but I see you guys going millions of dollars around, so I don't think that's, I'm close to that, so, Little Springs offers some CTE classes, and, um, this would be an expansion on that, where, uh, the students could actually get a, a certificate, and follow career pathways, which I think they do now, isn't that what you told me, that, uh, starting with at least sixth grade? Traditionally, CTE schools are either self-contained in the school, they're on a separate wing of the school, or the children or students are bused away to a different school. Having a CTE program right at the school would be a real advantage for the students. Programs in CTE will offer pathways to secondary transitions, um, so often, we only think about college, there's trade schools, but there's also programs where, uh, students could go to work the, the day after high school, uh, it provides career development, uh, if you link to businesses and industries in the area, um, and this, 10 years ago, this is really strange, I was working on a project for SOAR, and, uh, Dr. Jerry, who's from, uh, West Plains, she went out and interviewed every, uh, business, every factory, every, everything in the 10 counties, and they all had the same thought, they didn't have enough skilled employees, and they had money to expand. I don't think it's any different than it was 10 years ago, I think we're still in the same situation, so. This program would include diversity in the enrollment, all students could enroll no matter where they're at, if they're a C student, there's a pathway for them, if they're an A student, there's a pathway for them, uh, it would provide college connections, and one example of this might be, um, I don't know if Bill's passionate about this, I'm passionate about this, about having a construction in your school, like a construction class where you build houses. like a, a construction class where you build houses. And so if, say you wanted to be an architect, you could benefit from taking the construction classes. Because in that construction class, you'd learn how to read a blueprint, you'd learn how to trigonometry. There'd be all kinds of things that would help you when you got to college. It just wouldn't be, it's really for everybody, so. And, uh, you could earn certi- certificates, and, uh, there's also leadership opportunities. There's different organizations that currently the school doesn't have, uh, that if you get into CTE, uh, these open up for students. And this is just kind of the mission and the vision of CTE. The, the main idea is to meet, uh, students at their skill and knowledge levels. So there's something for everybody. The building needs, uh, the building is close to the superintendent's office, and, uh, it would support the CTE center for juniors and seniors. And eventually maybe bring, uh, students from surrounding schools into it. And, uh, by leasing or buying the MODOC building, this would free up, uh, free up the school for the future. The economy's not gonna change till after, they're predicting till after 2030, and then it's just gonna be expanding more to trades. There's gray collar workers. Uh, I didn't know this until I started, uh, working on this. And, um, there's white collar and blue collars, but now we have gray collar workers. And these are people that go to school, went for, to a community college, and just get, uh, specific skills, uh, such as in healthcare or H care, things like that. And then there's also new collar jobs, and these are the people that graduate from high school with a certification that go right out into the workforce. They don't need to get any more training, or they'll have ju- on-the-job training. So, uh, that's kind of interesting. That's a whole new ballgame. And this came out of the Wall Street Journal in September, and these are the best-paying, uh, new collar jobs that was, uh, in September of 21. So that's, that's pretty impressive, that you can leave high school and make that kind of money. Not everybody could, but, you know. So, uh, these are the trends to match knowledge and skills and, uh, provide credentials, uh, that employers are wanting. And, um, it's, it'd be a big boost for the community also because, uh, they would have a, a workforce that was ready to go to work. And, uh, it would provide fewer resources for them. And their workforce would be ready to train. They would be ready to go to work as soon as they got out of high school. Now, note this, there's three different avenues here. There's trained, old colleagues, and ready-to-work. So, all of those are important because every student has different needs, so. Now, I'm throwing out millions of dollars here, but, uh, to completely renovate both buildings, it's between one and a half and two million. Now, this figure is if somebody's, uh, put down a pot of gold. This would be like digging up the asphalt, redoing the sidewalks, complete renovation, which I don't really think is anywhere necessary. Uh, the upgrades and repairs can be done in phases. The north building, as I said, needs more work. Uh, the south building really only needs the HVAC systems updated, and right now they're working. So they may work another two years, and then they may quit next year. Nobody knows, so. But integrity did look at them, and you should have that information in them, so.
Yeah, I think it should be shared in another report, so I don't think you got it in this one.
Yeah, it's, it's in the one that.
The estimate is basically that the current units are functional, they're sold, and at some point in time, we're probably looking at, the shot, none of their shop made it anywhere, big two-hundred fifty to four-hundred thousand dollars in, in retros and upgrades on the HVAC side. Not all at once. It doesn't have to happen right, right away, but at some point in time, there's got to be that much of an investment in that to get those where they need to be, so.
The nice thing about that is you can train somebody to be an HVAC system repair person, and they could work on it, so. This is where I did my research with CTE high schools, uh, with the Little Springs schools. I worked with Dessie, the city of Little Springs. Jean Douglas was the one that did the, uh, the Soli study. Integrity did the HVAC system study. And I spoke with other grant writers about what grants were available out there, and there is money out there for this program. There's money coming down the pipe for this, so. I studied both career pathways and Missouri connections, both good programs. I think the schools are using career pathways. One of the biggest obstacles might be, you'd have to hire additional staff or additional counselor. But the alternative is to lease the space somewhere else, and there's no way to fix this building. Uh, to lease or take ownership of the building or build an additional building of bonds. What we're seeing is that this program could start in 2022 or 2023, uh, with only a small amount of repair maintenance. Uh, this is something that Dessie is wanting to do, and the legislature's, uh, in Jeff City, uh, is on board with having Little Springs School District get funding for these programs, so. And, uh, the school and the community, I think, are excited about the prospects, so. Uh, one of my friends was talking one night about his son, he'd just graduated from high school, and there was five other kids there. And he asked him what they were gonna do about high school when they got done, and they, his son was the only one that knew what he was gonna do. So every kid needs a pathway, and then, and a way, it's starting in the middle school, a pathway to see where they're gonna go. We don't know what he might have to say. We also don't know when his parents money, who went to college to him, and, uh, one of my friends, their daughter went to, uh, school to be a teacher. She got three and a half years and decided she wanted to be a nurse. So it can be expensive when you get in the middle of things and change your mind. Uh, this is the cost history projection. Uh, probably try around forty-five thousand a year to run the building. Uh, this is without.
Is that both buildings or just one?
This is just one.
Which one, the south one?
South one. And this is, uh, doesn't include the internet, which would be, it's going four thousand.
How much?
Four thousand.
Are those the numbers I provided you from Andrew?
Yes.
These numbers?
No, 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 not these. It just doesn't include the IT stuff.
Yeah, the IT was right around four thousand.
So we're projecting natural gas to drop? Cause that's not what I heard.
Well, no, it's going up.
Yeah, that's twenty.
The first, yeah, first number's twenty nineteen.
Nineteen to twenty, going back up.
We don't know why it dropped in twenty twenty.
So those were actual costs?
Yeah, those were actual costs.
In twenty nineteen, it was eighty-two, eighty-nine, and twenty twenty-three, it's gonna be seventy-four, seventy?
Would that be assuming that they've replaced the HVAC?
Uh, no, uh-uh, and it will actually go down if that, if that would happen.
Where'd you get those numbers at from the city?
They'll give them to me, yeah.
That building's been empty, right?
And, you know, in twenty twenty, that building could have been completely empty, and they could have had it.
Shut off. Shut off. I'm sure there wasn't anything going on.
I, uh, I don't even, I buy the electric.
Do they think electric's high? I mean, that's.
I think it'll go up higher than that.
Well, we projected it at one and a half percent eighty degrees Fahrenheit, so.
Maybe you have to guess something. I just think it's higher than that.
And then you have this in your pack, but this is like, uh, taking ownership with the building? Not sure we wanna do that.
Leanne, let me ask you a question. Let me stop you right there.
Okay.
Cause I saw that you said that in here. And I, I don't know how you make a cost analysis without a cost, right? So how, how can you advise us against it if there's no cost?
Well, cause the purchase price is unknown.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But it'll be known at some point.
Right.
But I don't see how you can, uh, uh, I, I just don't know how you can say, "I advise against that."
You mean ownership of both buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you're specific. You say we should not undertake buying it. Well, I mean, if they want four hundred thousand dollars, which is a number that's been thrown around, that's, oh, for a good deal.
But as I understand it, I don't think we'd have to buy it.
No, I don't either.
I think they'll just give it to the city, or just give it to us.
Well, at that point, why would you lease it?
Yeah.
I, I, I think there's a really strong case for owning that particular building. Um, a really strong case for owning.
And here's the thing, you don't know if the city's gonna sell it.
Uh, I got the impression talking to Ben that they've worked with us on that.
That they'd sell the north building, not the south.
I think she'll give it to us for a buck.
I think she'll sell the south building.
Yeah. I'll sell it for a dollar.
Sell the south building?
Yeah.
To us.
Okay, that's right.
Exactly.
That's what I.
I, I didn't get the impression that they would have any issue basically.
You know, they, they, they wanna do the package, but they don't wanna eat the whole elephant, right?
Some of those things, they won't know till tomorrow.
And I think their issue is the ongoing maintenance costs.
Right.
You know, and, and so.
I mean, do you wanna buy the, do you wanna buy the north building?
No. Not even for a dollar.
They can't give you that.
I mean, so you can, you can lease or buy, you know, the south building, so. And then there's the do, the do nothing.
But go back to the cost, uh, a couple slides earlier, when we were talking about electrical and all of that. Yeah, we had that chart there, and he was talking about the electrical cost, and, yeah, right there. So essentially, we're looking at annual cost, it, depending how you, how you use it, it's gonna be right around fifty thousand dollars a year. It would be like if, they said, "Take this building over."
Right, right.
Then we have a fifty thousand dollar liability at that point.
Right.
Fifty thousand a year, if we do nothing else to it.
Yeah, assuming, assuming the maintenance stays up, right?
Your insurance might be cheaper, cause Beth said her insurance was high on that building, so.
Obviously, just roll right into music, so.
Yeah.
Probably would be higher, but not probably that much, but.
Yeah.
I think the maintenance may go down.
The maintenance is going up, because we do a lot of our stuff.
Right.
Well, this, with the empty building, everything happens with them.
That's right.
Things break in empty buildings.
Just like your house being empty.
Nothing worse.
But I, I think to get it started in that building, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be that many costs. And there's, and there's some really things you could do with it.
I agree.
Now, we're gonna have a test.
See.
I, I saw a colleague get nervous there. And that was it. But, but really, if you guys would look at that CTE 101. That's, um, that's what Dessie sent, and so that's.
Hey, what I'd like to do is, if I could get y'all to focus on this here right here. So this is really, in the, in the CTE world, this is kind of like the Bible. It, it, it helps you get a very good grasp of all the different pathways that are available to our students. And, and, and I want you to know, it's not that we're not doing, doing any of these. We're doing some of these now, you know. Industrial engineering technology, we've got engineering going on at the high school right now, with Mr. Napster and that Project Lead the Way. You've got, you've got business management technology going on with finance, and with the things that are going on with Mrs. Lee and, and, uh, and Mrs. Hustle, you know? So we got stuff going on there. Ag, we're heavy in ag, you know? Look at all this stuff. We're doing ag, agribusiness systems, animal systems. We're doing those things right now. So I don't want, I don't want this to come across that we're not doing anything. We're doing some CTE stuff. We started STEM projects. If you see up in the upper right-hand corner, we've got STEM going at our middle school. We're expanding it at the high school. Uh, I know Mr. Cotton gets interested in trying to get it going, and he's got his after-school STEM program, but to kind of ratchet it up and make a Project Lead the Way program there at the elementary as well. So we're doing pieces of this, but I think the point is, is if the board's interested in expanding this on a larger basis, all right? That requires more square footage. We don't have the square footage to do that, all right? I mean, we're, we're making the best of the, the space that we have available right now, doing the programs that we're currently doing. But this gives you an idea of some of the other areas we could expand it, and, and I would not suggest, if you're interested in doing current tech head expansion, that we do all this. This is, this is for a comprehensive current tech head center. You know, you do the pieces that appeal to, to your kids, and you do the pieces that make sense in our area, all right? And so the process would be is that you would survey students, you'd find out what their interests are. You'd look at all the data. I've already talked to Steve Bryant, cause he can pull data for our region as far as the most sought-after and hard-to-find positions in Howe County and South Central. Maybe we need to focus our energy, energies there. And then the other factor you look at is you don't, you don't, you're not, uh, you don't duplicate. You know, we don't, if we want to offer something here, we need to offer something that our kids can't get anywhere else. You know, if they can hop in a bus and go down to the current tech center, then it makes some sense to do it, right? On the other hand, if we create something unique, then we can get students from other districts come here, and they can learn side-by-side with our kids. And so there's real potential there, so it's all in the planning. And, and so I just wanted y'all to get a feel for what all the career clusters are. Uh, we've talked about, I know Dr. Spencer, Spencer and I have talked about video production, you know? We don't have anything really in that area. We did, got a little bit. I know we're doing some at the middle school, uh, with Melanie, which is pretty cool. But, but we still got, we could expand that on a much larger basis. Arts and communication, we're doing human services right now. We have a lot of kids doing CNA at the career center, uh, down in, in, in West Plains. So we are doing pieces of this, and we're providing these opportunities for our students, all right? But we can, this is an opportunity to take a building that is, from a cost standpoint, pretty cheap, to maybe you, in a usable building, to be able to start doing some of these things. There are grant dollars available for startup cost, all right? For, for, through Dessie, I believe that. I talked to Steve Bryant. They're giving out, they had quite a bit of money they were giving out last year for this current year for remodel. But he said those, those were only targeted for the fifty-seven existing career centers. They weren't targeted for any new programs. So he said those dollars probably would be available, but he would assist us in trying to find new dollars. I believe that we can get a strong partnership with Missouri S and T. They've been very, very positive. They've been appropriating dollars from the legislature to support CTE, specifically Project Lead the Way. Um, so I, I think there's opportunity there. The overriding concern would be, what's your vision of this? You know, where do you see this going? Or if, if you're interested in this, do you see us adding one to three to five to six teachers in the next two or three years? Well, now all of a sudden, you have to sustain that, and you either find it elsewhere in your budget, right? And say, "Okay, we're not gonna teach these areas, and we're gonna move this over here now," so there's like a no-cost increase, or you have to find additional revenue. And the only way you're gonna find additional revenue is through some type of tax rate levy increase or something like that. So you have to be very clear about what your future ideas are for something like this, all right? Now, on the other hand, the, the building's there. It's a very usable building. Uh, I think the, the idea that came to mind was current tech head expansion, right? But I think you admitted to me once, well, we could use it for other things, too. You could, but it, it isn't, the building wasn't built to be a school, all right? It could be built to be a training center. It could be built, I think, to be a current tech head. I'm not sure it's built for eighth graders or seventh graders on a regular, normal, daily basis. And so you, you, it is limited in terms of what you can use for it. It really is, can be used for program expansion. Uh, we talked about construction engineering technology, which would be really cool, which we talked about. Diesel mechanics is, is what really started this conversation to begin with, cause there's a need for that here, uh, and that's a program that's not offered anywhere else. Aviation was brought up. Drone technology was brought up. I mean, there's a really some, some high-tech stuff that our kids, I believe, would be very interested in.
A lot of fun in neurodynamics.
What's that?
A lot of fun in neurodynamics.
Exactly. I mean, we've got the potential to get kids in a two-year program where they can then go from there, either be employable or go on to a four-year school and continue their education. So I think there's some real potential here, all right? Now, that being said, I, I guess, what's your thoughts on about the south building, first of all? Cause I'm, I'm going to, and Tony's not aware of this, but I'm gonna kind of beg off on this. I may ask you to table action on this, uh, because I really don't want you to feel like you're rushed into making a decision, cause we have time. The, the lease for, uh, the city isn't done until March. And so, you know, at some point in time, I think the city wants to know what the intention of the Board of Education, the school district is. But I'd really rather you kind of take time to mull it over before we just jump into it. But I would like to know your general thoughts about acquiring, I think we already agreed, the south building's the one that you'd be interested in or leasing with. Thoughts?
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent.
You'd be a favor of that?
I have a question to just touch on what you had said there. Can we not expand the program smaller? I mean, do we have to be looking at a six or eight teacher increase over the next two years in order to acquire this building? When I, when I mentioned, you know, we had a brief, very brief conversation about using it for other things. I mean, is it something that we could expand, possibly the small-engine mechanic? Possibly the small engine mechanics, uh, aspect of the, of the ag program into something more towards a diesel. Engine or expand our wood shop program into a construction type deal. Make take two, a couple programs. Expand what we already have and then utilize that space for other needs within the school district. Do we have to go this direction of we are creating a career and tech head center? We're gonna utilize this entire building. We gotta bring on four or five teachers within the next two to three years and, and create this program. Is there some kind of hybrid use of this building that would be beneficial to the district?
I think all that would come down to line. I mean, there could be millions of discussions on how to do it. The teachers, administrator, all that. You know, I was gonna say yes on acquiring the building.
Paying three thousand dollars a month or a year to, to have it or?
Well, but with that, I mean, first you gotta acquire the building, right?
No, first you gotta come up with a plan, what you're gonna do with the building and how you're gonna fund the building.
The vision is here.
But that's a conversation the entire board needs to have. The premise of this was for current take head expansion. Uh, and, and in reference to what you're saying, I totally agree, Matt. I, but I don't wanna take this and turn it into another wood shop. But we need to make it more advanced to that construction technology makes perfect sense.
I understand that.
You know what I mean? So we need to think larger than what, you know, we need to move forward and, and, and not just be building furniture and stuff, you know, not, not there's anything wrong with that.
That's not what I'm even leading to.
Instead of starting with diesel engines, starting with lawnmower engines.
Well, I mean, we're already doing that in our actual, but what I'm saying is, do we have to take this building and say, yes, we want the building and we want a career tech head center in it? And we want five to six teachers in the next three years to, to build a, a large-scale program. And for me, it's hard to commit to, to taking on. That size of a project. I mean, how do you, I mean, we're.
And do it in phases.
Right, yeah. Can we start, can we look at this thing smaller and then look at the potential down the road?
Yeah, because I would, what I would suggest, and I, I've had this conversation with a couple of you, but. If at some point the board says, we are interested in partnering with the city on this deal. And we are interested in CTE. I mean, we don't have to say how much CTE, just CTE, all right? Then I would envision a one to three to five-year plan. Where we say, okay, year one, we're gonna do this, all right? Year two, we're gonna add this. Year three, we're gonna add this, all right? And continue to grow the program. I wouldn't be in favor of just jumping into it. Year one, we've got five new programs in there. I just don't think it's gonna work. And it's not sustainable. Cause you're gonna have to build up to try to figure out where you're gonna get the revenue to continue to pull it off. That's right.
How much fun you're gonna get a year after year versus coming, ressing taxes or getting a upper pocket.
Right.
Right. And, and, and if we get kids coming in from outer district, we charge the tuition, but that's not gonna pay for the program.
You know anything about that, Picky, uh, where? Where would you get kids? I mean, the number of kids possibly, was that anywhere you're studying?
No, it wasn't.
Let me, uh, let me ask you a question, Leanne. You alluded early in your presentation that this was funded by. Uh, the USDA for a larger grant from them. What would that grant be towards?
Helping redo the building and the HVAC system.
So the USDA would potentially have a grant to upgrade the US, the, the, the entire HVAC system. Which is, and, and the ceiling and the windows, which is really all the work that needs to be done.
Provide equipment, if you needed equipment, like if you were gonna do diesel mechanics, they would buy the equipment.
So there's funding for actual.
Yes.
Uh, so, so, and then there's also funding in other, in other areas for some of these program startups, right?
On the Desi side more so. Now, Desi had someone remodeling, but all that went to the existing career center.
Right, but we could get remodeling grants from.
USDA.
From USDA. Program development grants from Desi. And then you have to, you have to figure out in the long term how you're gonna fund it.
Right, like by talking, you know, to the whites, you know, there's huge funding for aerodynamics, like for drones or any. Plane engines, stuff like that, where that could maybe fund itself in a way for a while, you know, to start up buying that stuff.
Uh, one of the things I wanna mention, to get a certificate, Desi has, and I think the principals know this, because they pointed this out to me right away. There's specific, uh, classes you have to take. This isn't like going to your dad's. This is completely different. You have to learn certain math skills, English skills. You have to be ready to go out the door and be ready to work. Uh, it's just not a trade school. It's so much bigger than that. It encompasses every class in, in high school. English, math, all of them.
Yeah, so we're doing these, and I know there's, we've probably talked days on this. Doing like, you know, saying starting out small, whatever. Is this kids that'd be there from eight o'clock in the morning till three? Or just the two-hour, three-hour thing?
It's, it's a three-hour program. Every, it would be, and then, then you go to your regular classes.
But I think we could set it up any way you wanna set it up. You know, whether it's a. You're on the box.
For months and I, I've thought about all kinds of scenarios and, um, Matt, you know, I, I hear you. Uh, I don't know that, I mean, eventually, maybe when it grows to that, but I think we can have a really successful, small CTE program. Very shortly. A lot using the teachers we already have and the block's schedule would definitely be to our advantage. I've got teachers already that I could do a few things with their schedule and they're over at the, over at the CTE building. Their day, working over there. Um, we have teachers right now that would excel at, uh, the programs that, that we're talking about.
So you don't foresee higher, the need to immediately hire three, four teachers?
Not immediately. I think, um, you know, three would probably be, but that's probably a couple of years down the road. I think the first year, I think we could probably do it with the teachers we have and kind of get our feet wet and kind of see how it's going. And then you might look to, you know, depending on how it goes, replace those teachers at the high school and have them, the other three full-time CTE.
He's already named the building. CTE building.
It's exciting. It's an exciting opportunity.
Well, I don't, and I don't doubt that, and I don't doubt that. I mean, I think the building's an asset to a certain degree there at all. I just wanna make sure we're not looking at.
And we do need a plan. It needs to be sustainable, absolutely. You're absolutely right. And we would need to do all of that legwork before we just do it. Um, but the possibilities there are, are really, really, and like Leanne was talking, we've seen such a shift. You know, in our, in our kids and our student population from when, when I was in school, you know, to where you were either in college or. Or you went off and worked. And now these, these, uh, these trade schools and these opportunities, and that's where the, that's where the jobs are at, honestly. Um, and we've got, you know, it, it's such a, our counselor position, you know, used to, it was just, here's your college options. Or if you're not going to college, well, here's your, here's your work options. But now there's so much more for kids and. And these CTE high school programs really prepare those kids. And I, you know, I've, I've, there's a lot that, that go to. South Central and West Plains and then still go to college. But they've got a certificate that they can, you know, work at this job while they're going to school and. Not taking out any debt. Um, you know, the healthcare field, you get a huge leg up when you get that certificate. So there's a lot of, a lot of advantages for. You know, I don't care what you're doing after high school. These, these programs can really give you a big advantage.
You know, I had a, I had a phone call from a parent last week who was concerned and frustrated. Because they felt like they really wish that we could offer more offerings for students who have a difficult time with. Mainstream core classes, you know, whether it be chemistry or physics or something like that. The type of kid that, when they, when. That kid graduates from high school, he or she's going to be going out and working. I mean, that's what their times are. And so trying to create all learning opportunities for them in high school, that makes more sense for them, I guess. Uh, and which would be a lot of what this would be about.
And that goes back, my, yes, one hundred percent.
Well, I mean, I was a straight to work.
Right.
Guy, you know, so I, I'm passionate about the, you know, out, carpentry, plumbing, electrical, let's, let's put them to work. Let's give them a skill. I'm for all that. I just wanna make sure. We're not just really excited about this, this building and then we're like, oh, well, what do we do with it now? You know, how do, how do we make this work?
Well, we talked about that early, that, you know, when we talked about looking at the building, we first decided, well, before we start looking at the building, we need to decide if this is. What we wanna do. And we kind of decided that, you know, regardless of the building, this is something we wanna focus on. In the high school and in the, as a district, so.
See, I, I feel that, and if the board, whether it be probably next month says, okay, we wanna partner with the city. I feel comfortable that you can have one or two programs up and running by August, because the building's ready to go right now. I mean, we have to phase the teaching there.
By August of next, the start of the next whole year, you can have a couple of programs.
I mean, I go, it's gonna be a huge thing, but it's, it's an additional offering for kids, you know? And it's simply because the building we're looking at, it doesn't require a lot of renovation. It's functional right now. You know, I mean, yeah, there's some things we could tweak and make it a little bit better, but it, it's usable.
What about the location?
Well, it's, it's just down the hill from the ag building, so it can't be much further than that, you know? I mean, the kids are walking over the ag building right now. Like walk another half a block, you know?
It's good for them. It builds character.
Would you expect, uh, some kids that go to West Plains now to, uh, maybe stay here?
Um.
You know, handful or?
Maybe a couple, but prob, because again, like, we're not going to offer what West Plains offers. And then a lot of times those students are specifically going for those.
Simply because it's.
And I think we would, if we do like, for instance, audio visual, you know, that, that's a, that's just a different segment of students that West Plains really doesn't. Offer anything for those students.
Are, are we look like the, when you talk about programs, teachers that you have available and stuff that you're looking there, have you weighed that against available jobs in this area? Like say, audio visual, is there a lot of, I mean, is there, I mean.
No. Yeah, I, I know what you're saying. Like, and that's.
I wanna make sure we don't get too far out.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, I mean, I've never.
And actually drone tech is more, that would probably be more usable in our area, you know, with real, realtors and. Law enforcement. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of opportunities.
Is that orange?
No. I don't know who says it. Robert does. But no, like audio visual, like that's something that if, if they were to get certified in that, you're not gonna have a whole lot of opportunities here, but it would be something that. You know, maybe you're going to college to do this, then that certification would help that. Uh, those are just good technical skills that are, that are good to have. Um, you know, construction would be definitely an easy tie-in. So we would just have, we'd have to do some legwork to see what. What programs really fit and not just funds.
Sure.
So let's kind of walk back to what Matt's original thing was. If we, we've, we've got something that we can start slow with. And it's not real, we're not really talking about a whole lot of extra funding right now, the way Marty talks to get, get it off the ground.
No, I mean, we can write grants for the program side of it. If we, whatever we decide to do, whether it be drones, video production, whatever, we can write grants. And the, most of them are fifty-fifty grants, but I'm not sure I, I couldn't get more help from Missouri S and T, because they've been very good to work with. And that'll pay for a lot of the startup costs to buy all the equipment and everything else that we need to get started. So I think we can get that covered through grants, a lot of it. Uh, and then reallocating staff is the rest, which wouldn't be any additional costs there. Uh, the building itself, I mean, there's gonna be ongoing costs much to what you, you saw up there with the ants thing, but. Doesn't sound like there's a tremendous amount of dollars. Now, at some point in time, we're gonna have to bite the bullet and do some of that HVAC system. But there may be grants out there for them as well.
Well, if we have classes taught that, maybe we could get, I mean, the.
Well, I mean, if the USDA grant is out there and we can score that, that might solve that problem right up front.
Uh, Trane, uh, had a, a grant for schools.
You mentioned in here the legislators or something, all in board with maybe helping us?
David Evans out there. I'm gonna say all that stuff are out there. You're all were at the board meeting, right? And so I thought Representative Evans made it very, very clear that he was committing dollars. Did you get that impression?
Mike repeated. And he also, and he also said he talked to Carla, uh, uh.
He said in a very politician-type way, that there might be some funding available.
Well, I mean, it's not his money to give away, so, you know, he's, he's like.
He was on that board, the budget board.
We did talk like he would represent us well in, in the event that we would.
It's, it's a big deal if you can pull it off. I mean, this is a big deal.
Well, I mean, if, if, I mean, if we can get the building for next to nothing, if there's grants to, to do some of the upgrades to it. There's some grants to get it started and we can look at some projects relatively slow, I would be in favor of moving that. I just, I think. We need to be careful and have a really good, good idea of what we're gonna do and how, you know, cause things tend to snowball. Air conditioners tend to. Cost a million dollars more than what.
But I would suggest too, if we decide to go this direction, then we put together a task force. It'll be a standing committee. It'll be a current, a, a CTE development task force. Several board members will be on it, several teachers will be on it, students will be on it, to talk specifically about what CTE programs are we interested in moving forward. And we'll, you can go as slow or as fast as you want to, but I would recommend the same thing. I think go slow. Just do, do one or two programs and just see how it goes. You know, and then if you wanna add after that, add after that.
So here's the question, if it doesn't work, then what do we do with the building?
That's a really good question.
It's a really good question.
If you, if you lease the building from the city, then you just.
Just walk away.
I just think it's a good opportunity in the district to get a good building for next to nothing.
Well, we, we've looked at that before in years past, and you are correct. If you've got a use for it, if you don't have a use for it, it's a liability. That's all it is. I mean, I, you know.
Well, and, I mean, we don't really know what the lease is or the purchase is or.
I think the purchase would be. But the lease would be different, because if there, if the city's gonna maintain the maintenance and upkeep on the building, then there's gonna be some costs involved.
We could always put a white room in.
There you go. I really hope Wendell Bailey's been listening for the last hour or so, because we have done a very good job of spending OPM that he likes to talk to other people's money.
I thought he was gonna be here, wasn't he, Marty?
What's that?
Wendell.
He told me he would.
This was a good conversation. So, so can we, and as far as, if there's any, no more discussion on this, if we wanna table the action on this, is that, is that's okay with the board? Then we come back in November and, and just kind of take, it take a month to think about it, all right? And then we'll come back and do that. That'll be, like I said, if Ben finds out in November versus October, it's just gonna be okay.
All right, moving on.
Yeah, I gave each of you a handout. I wanted to give you an update on where we are with COVID as of today. Uh, compared to what I released, thank you, by the way.
Still here, do you move?
I'm in the process.
You can, you can leave if you want. You don't, don't feel obligated to stay. Uh, compared to what we released last Friday, uh, the numbers have gone down significantly. We had quite a few kids come back to school today, which is kind of like a really good deal. Active positives, we have nine. Uh, those are five positives and what we consider to be four presumptive positives. Presumptive positives are positives because students are showing symptoms and they were in close contact to a positive. So the health department refers to them as presumptive positives and they treat them the same as the positive, whether they've actually had the test or not. If they're symptomatic and they were around a positive, they assume they're positive. So that, of those nine, five are actual positives and four presumptives. If you break down by building, you have five elementary, one middle school and three high school. The close contact quarantines now are twenty-four. Compared to, I think it was seventy-some on Friday. So you know how many kids came back on to the school today? So. The numbers, if you look at them, twenty-four con, close contact, twenty teens, twenty elementary, two middle school, one high school, it should be, it should be three middle school, I think. They're really pretty good. I mean, we're, we're in pretty good shape. We're holding our own, you know?
Why wouldn't we test the presumptive positive? Instead of quarantining everybody.
Yeah, I don't know. And that, and that comes through, that comes through the health department. You know, they basically, they make the call if it's a presumptive positive, but they don't require them to get the test.
But they quarantine off of presumptive?
They quarantine in exactly the same way as if there's a positive.
Not them, but they quarantine close contacts off of presumptive?
Yes. They treat them like a positive.
Presumptions are people like siblings in the same house that end up showing, showing symptoms and they just.
Typically, they're household members, they're siblings who are around them, so.
That's a presumptive positive.
Right, exactly. Staff, we have no active positive knowing staff and we have two close contact quarantines among staffs. So we're doing, doing fairly well. Now, I was asked to get, to gather information about, we had the same conversation last year, of all the kids who have been quarantined, right? For close contacts, how many of them actually became a positive, were actually tested as a positive? So I haven't shown kind of gathered that data. That statement is hers, verbatim from an email she sent me. Says we've had a total, and that was as of ten, five. Said we've had, it should be ten, five, twenty-one. We've had a total of a hundred and sixty-seven student quarantines. Of those hundred and sixty-seven, a hundred and fourteen were quarantined due to being in close contact at school.
Was that this school year?
Yeah, I'm ten, I'm sorry, ten, five and twenty-one.
Okay.
She gathered this for me just a couple of weeks ago.
This doesn't count last year.
No, this is, that since school started in August. We've had a total of a hundred and sixty-seven student quarantines. Of those one sixty-seven, a hundred and fourteen were quarantined due to being in close contact at school. To date, only one student quarantined as a result of being in close contact at school has tested positive for COVID soon after. That being said, of those twenty-nine cases, and we had a total of thirty at that time. of those twenty-nine cases with unknown origin, I cannot say whether they contracted COVID at school or somewhere else. I can just tell you that they were not considered close contacts at school by looking at seating charts, et cetera. I know we have a lot of students that spend time together outside of school, and I'm sure that has contributed in some way. So, you can't necessarily say that it was at school or not at school. Uh, you can't definitively say, you know, of those hundred and sixty-seven, all we know is that all those kids that we removed from school, were being close contacts, only one came back as a positive. And so, which kind of begs, that begs the issue, which we had the same conversation last year, are we quarantining kids who are healthy? Well, probably, but we're also following CDC guidelines, and I think we have to follow CDC guidelines, my recommendation would be to do the same. One of the things that this comes down to, if we deviate from CDC guidelines, our coverage through music may disappear. And music made that very, very clear. They said, if, if, any school district who chooses not to follow CDC guidelines, or more importantly, the guidance from their own health department, may put in jeopardy their liability insurance coverage through them.
May or will?
May. They didn't say will, they said may. I'm just telling everyone.
I mean, that's a, I mean, that's a big difference.
But, but, well, yeah, it is a big difference, but it's also you're putting yourself on a limb, just need to understand that, all right? I mean, that's, my position is to make sure that we protect the, the, the litigious interest of the school district, all right? And so, that's kind, and that's why ninety-nine point nine percent of districts are following the guidelines. Now, I'm not saying there aren't any outliers, because there are. And I'm also not saying I haven't halfway considered, why don't we just throw all the quarantining stuff out the door? But it does bring into question issues as far as our coverage on our liability and emissions policy, so. Need to keep that in mind.
So, there are some districts that are not following that.
Well, I think that you sent me one from Jeff City, and, and then I talked to the one, there's a, just talked to the superintendent of the meeting, I said, it was last week, from Winfield, and they've decided to do the, the, kind of deviate on the masking stuff, I think, as far as what they require the kids, because they get through all the masking out, and, and, so they're kind of deviating from that as well, not the full contact tracing stuff, but, but, you know.
As far as having a mask mandate, is that what they're deviating from?
Right, yeah, yeah.
And so, does the CDC require that there's a?
Well, I think partly, too, that if there's a close contact, then they're allowing their kids to come back if they wear a mask, which departs from CDC guidelines.
But does the CDC require that we have a mask mandate?
No, not at all. Uh-uh, not at all, but they just set parameters for contact tracing. And if both people are wearing a mask, you'll contact tracing, right? But on the other hand, in Winfield, they decided that if you, if you're a close contact, we'll allow you to go ahead and come back if you wear a mask and get checked, which is, which deviates from CDC. Because CDC says that if you're not wearing a mask, you're, you're a close contact, you're, you're out for ten days, or they're saying fourteen. Our health department's made it ten, they've brought it down to ten, all right?
So, our health department is a little bit different than what the CDC does allow?
Yes, they made that decision, and I, when I talked to an attorney about this last week, they said you would be okay on doing something different, provided your local health department supports you. You know, so if we say we don't want an annual contact tracing, if our local health department says, yeah, we're good with that, go for it, then I think, then we would have some leverage in the future if we have an issue.
Do you think the other schools are similar to this?
Do I believe what now?
The other schools that we do are similar to this?
Probably.
Do you think it's something that, uh, the health department could be petitioned to do a reduction in quarantine days?
Well, they already are doing a reduction from CDC guidelines, because right now it's ten and CDC's fourteen.
You think they could reduce to seven or five?
Well, we could ask them.
Yeah, I just want, I just have, you know.
Maybe on a trial basis.
No, we could ask them.
That's a good question, to partner up with some of the K eight schools in West Plains, Mountain View, just to talk to some of the others and see if they're willing to.
If we're seeing the same thing.
No, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all, you know, and, and what, and let me share something else with you that just came down from CDC, it's in here, I'll talk to you in a minute, but as long as the health department supports us, then that would make me feel more comfortable.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, talk to the other schools, talk with the health department, see if they.
It gives this number that a hundred and sixty-seven people have been quarantined once.
Use actual local data that, I mean, reflects what, I mean, we're not going out on a limb and.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, we can sure petition them, and we can show them the data. At the end of the day, they can say, well, we appreciate that, but we're still gonna follow CDC guidelines.
And bury well, maybe.
And we could. I mean, I don't have a problem talking to the other suits to see if they're interested in doing that. For us, it would be Mountain View would be part of, they, they follow How, How County, and West Plains, and Kate Richards, and Fairview, and, I mean, all the K eight will be part of this as well.
Right.
So, but I, I have no problem checking into it. I mean, if, if they will support us in being a little less restrictive, I'm good with it.
Well, I mean, it's not COVID that's killing us, it's the quarantine.
Yeah. I totally agree. Been there, waiting for a year and a half.
Right.
The quarantine stuff is real, is hurting these kids.
Yes, it is.
First-hand experience.
Our job is the education of the children.
That's right.
That's what we should be concerned with, the education of the children and the safety of the children, but if the numbers prove that the safety's not the issue, it's the quarantine, then that's what we should be looking at.
I, I don't disagree at all. I mean, that's why I shared this with you, you know? So, if this is something that our health department would support us with, I think that'd be fine, I have no problem with it. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna go out on a limb on our own either.
Well, I think that, that, that might be a drastic step at this point, I mean, we could do some, a little bit of legwork.
Right, no, yeah, I'll, I'll be happy to approach them, I have no problem. Uh, a few of the other comments, they appear to be in pretty good shape, numbers pretty bit, pretty turning downward. We are gonna review, it says October twenty-second, that's actually October twentieth. Uh, we have our district health revoters group, which will be reviewing our safe return to school plan, to see if there's good, if they have any suggested changes. Whatever recommendations they have will come back to the board for approval in November. I don't foresee any changes right now with what we currently have. I mean, if you take a look at our plan compared to a lot of other districts, ours is really pretty lenient. We don't have a mask mandate except for buses, but we don't, you know? I say that, I'm talking cheap, um, you know, but, but, but we aren't, I mean, and we don't, we just aren't as restrictive as a lot of the plans are, but, uh, I'm not sure we even wanna be more restrictive or less restrictive. Uh, right now, I don't really believe that there will be suggested changes to this existing plan, I believe our strength over the past year and a half has been our consistency. And that's something, because I've seen districts out there, they have a mask mandate, then they move away from the mask mandate, then they go back and have another mask mandate, then they move away from it. I'm like, I think we've been the same for the last year and a half, we haven't changed a whole lot of anything, right? We haven't had a mask mandate, uh, we've really tried to limit people in and out of the building. Last year, we've tried to, we live, really limited a lot of our big gatherings, this year, we're going back to the big gatherings. So, I, I think our consistency's been really good, and the fact that we're not changing things every other time that, that we, well, but spike in cases has changed now.
I agree with you.
So, I think we're doing good there. Uh, at this point in time, I, I think we continue to be forward following CDC guidelines and direction of the How County Health Department. This came out new on Friday, and it's called the test to stay option, CDC put that out. They said they will allow, they would allow close contact to stay in school or at work, provided they wear a mask for a fourteen-day period and undergo periodic testing. Now, I put ten in there because our local health department can decide to make that ten instead of fourteen, but our local health department, to my knowledge, has not accepted this yet. They have to accept this guideline, because since they're saying, if you have a close contact, say, a kid's a close contact, you can give them the option to stay in school, but they have to mask up, and they have to be tested, I think, at least three times in seven days.
For COVID or like?
COVID.
Do we have that, do we have that test? Do we have that testing capability?
We could use our test and not require them to go elsewhere.
Yes, we could test it, well, they would just have to go to the school nurse, school nurse's office three times a week and get tested, you know?
And we have the capacity.
Yes, yes, we do, and we could probably get more tests as well. Right now, we have that test. Where this would be different is that right now, we only make that test available to staff and children of staff upon request, we don't make it in general to all students. This would allow that to be available to students, and they would have the option, you know, you gotta be quarantined unless you're willing to mask up and get tested , uh, three times in a seven-day period. If you, if you're willing to do that, you can stay in school, and so I think it's a nice option, you know? Now, a lot of our, several folks may not take advantage of them, I say, well, my kid's not wearing a mask, and my, you're not gonna test my kid, but then they still have to quarantine.
That's their choice.
Correct. And again, our local health department still have to agree to it before we can do it, and it just came out Friday, so, it's still new. Any questions on that? That's my COVID-nineteen update.
Yeah, I, I kind of made a comment or a question. When I look at the positives and the close contacts, isn't that kind of backwards from last year? We have more elementary now and more high school and middle school before, and this year it's kind of changed to more of the elementary kids?
Except, we got hit two weeks ago. Now, at the beginning of the year, it was primary, elementary, middle school, about two weeks ago, we got hit with high school.
Yeah.
And we got hit pretty hard, you know? And so, at that point in time, the number of close contacts were about a third, a third, and a third, but it seems like it's gone back the other way now. But we have had, I think, since the beginning of the year, more issues with our elementary and middle school than we have high school compared to last year. Because last year, we were losing high school kids by sixty, seventy, eighty kids, you know?
Yeah, two weeks, like, and then, and then it adds up to like five.
Yeah.
I feel like.
Need to turn it back down.
Yeah, I feel like the middle school's really kind of the same as it was last year.
Well, after last year, we didn't really get any of it, probably, wouldn't it, I think?
Very few. I don't, I don't know that it's a huge difference, though.
And then one more thing on that test to stay deal, I found out, as, as far as activities are concerned, they could, they could still participate and compete, but they would have to be tested prior to each competition. So, if they have a ballgame or something, and they're under quarantine, and they're following this rule, they'd have to get tested before the ballgame.
They would have to wear a mask while they're competing?
I don't think while they're competing, no, they'd probably have to on the sideline, but not while they're out running around.
Coach, um, this year, the presumptive positive has got us. I, I have elementary kids that have had positive siblings in other buildings, and they've presumptively taken a lot of kids out of my building, so.
So, at this time, you'll contact some of the other suits?
Yes.
And see if they're willing to, you guys get together and form some sort, see if they're willing to.
See if we can bargain from the, with the health department to lower the contact days.
Yes. Just, and get the information, if you would, when you get that forwarded out to us, if the other suits will, uh, lend that to you, what kind of quarantine, what they're seeing as far as what are the positives from quarantine, if they're seeing the same, and I assume they will be, but, you know.
And they should be tracking it, same as we do.
Yeah, so that, that would be, I, I'd like to see that, I'm sure everybody else would, too.
All right.
Anything else on that? Okay, let's move on. Policy revisions, you guys met and got that all taken care of?
Yeah, I think we're good to go, we just need to make a motion to pass it, we'll get to action, so.
Okay, all right. Um, comments from the guests tonight? Very well, let's move on. And get to that place. Uh, we're gonna table the, uh, the idea to, to partner with the city right now?
I'll bring it back next month.
Give everybody a month to think about that. If you got any more questions, make sure you shoot them to Bill.
So, next month, we'll be voting on what exactly, in reference to the MODO buildings, whether we wanna acquire them or not? Are we at that point, or what?
Well, I, you all need to tell me, I mean, how, you were ready to jump in with both feet, is, or are you?
I'm not, no, I'm ready to. I, I would be, I would be in favor at this, right now, of a motion to.
Can you get like that?
Just like this, that we need to do a, we need to do our own feasibility study at that point with some administrators, with some board members, with teachers, to figure out, to come up with a plan of what we're gonna do if, if we were to acquire that building, what we're gonna do with it, what it's gonna take to fund it, what it's gonna take to get it started, because I agree, there's probably a lot of good grants out there to get it started, but I am really skeptical about taking that, about the long-term feasibility of that, because if we, you know, if it continues to grow, Marty said, you know, first year or two, we could take a couple of teachers we have, and that's, that's great, the first couple of years, but after that, you know, we're spending all the money we've got right now, you know, we don't have enough, we don't have money at this time to, to put two or three, you know, in four or five years, put two or three more teachers over there and, and pay them, so at that time, something's gotta go. Either, either you gotta come up with more money, you got, well, no, you've gotta come up with more money, there's just a couple of ways to do that. You either get some more in from an other source, or you get rid of something and move the money over here. That's what I'm interested in, seeing before, I say, yes, let's acquire the buildings, is, is a pretty comprehensive plan.
So, we will be voting on looking at whether or not it's feasible for the school, just taking, taking this more seriously, looking into it?
And telling the city that pending funding from our, that we would be interested pending our, pending our.
Results.
Results, yeah.
If the board ends up approving that next month, then my first action would be to put this group together and start putting a plan together on what this CTE advancement looks like, to be ready by at least February or March, to share back with this group, so you have kind of an idea where we're headed, because that's about the time that the windows open up for the grants for program development. So, I think we have about five months to figure out a plan, like, bring back to the board, you say, okay, yea or nay, let's move forward on this deal, you know? And, and I think the city just wants to hear, is the board even interested in partnering[1446.74] You know, and, and I think the city just wants to hear, is the board even interested in partnering with us? You know?
So, so if, if that's the case, and it sounds like most of us agree to that, why are we waiting till next month to agree to begin to look at it? Can't we agree to begin to look at it now?
Yeah, I just had a, I just wanted you to be aware of some things, I guess, I don't know. But it's okay.
Is there some more information you can bring to us before we make that decision?
Probably not at this time.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Is it your advisement that we table this for a month?
Yes, if you would.
Very well, we're gonna table it. Um, proposed policy revisions, a motion is in order to approve the policy revisions as presented. They've been sent out two times to look at, I, you know, I don't think there's anything else to discuss there. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed? Very well. A motion is in order to approve the policy maintenance agreements with MSBA for the next year for $3,479.
Yes, please do that.
I move.
My favorite number.
Please do that.
Second.
It is, every year. I give a run on that one.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
And opposed, can make the policy as theirself. Anything else for open session tonight?
No.
I receive a motion to go into executive session.
I move.
My Dean and Adam, is that my roll call?
Aye.
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 And aye. Very well. Thank you all.
Adios.
Thank you guys, have a good night.
It's not so bad, nine to five isn't bad, I really thought it was gonna be longer.
I know, when you told Andrew a lot, but I
I know, I, I was
We're not done. Adam? Pass me that.
Anthony, hi Bill.
We should have taken the over there.